Good morning, everybody. Beautiful day out there for the 11th of April compared to yesterday and last week, our snow and so on. Our first item up is item number two is the approval of the agenda. You have that before you. So approved, thank you very much. Item number three, declaration of any conflict of interest. Is there any conflict of any of the items? Go ahead, counselor. Okay, Wi-Fi?
Yes.
Okay. Does the approval still stand in, counselor? Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on to... Was there any conflict? I didn't hear any. So we'll move right into item number four, which is presentations. 4.1, grant request. Chabot River Aquatic Club, Brigitte DeVoo and Larry Boudreau, 1005. We are just about seven minutes late, but...
...and I've been a member of the Chabot River Boat Club for two years now. There we go. Got the magic touch. So yes, I'm a member of the club since two years ago. And this is Larry. Larry, I'll let you introduce yourself. Larry's been a member since 2000?
2002.
2002. So we're here to ask the municipality for a grant. So I'm just going to kind of go through the slide to show you what we've done so far. I know last year you have approved us for tax exemption, and we are very appreciative of that. It kind of freed up some money for us to do things around the club. So I just wanted to kind of go through that. So on behalf of the members, we thank you for your ongoing support. I know also that, Leland, you did find some docks for us to put in. So that was really appreciated since we lost some of our docks a couple of years back.
Can you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Sure. Okay, so what we've did so far, I don't know if any of you have been down to the boat club, but where the awning is, that was an old rotted deck. So there used to be a patio door upstairs that went out to a rotted deck. So it was a hazard. We had to block it off because people that were going upstairs, it was really dangerous. We didn't want them going on the deck because people could have fell through. So that was the project. We took the deck down, we built an awning, and we put a fire exit. That was the cheapest option for the club. So in doing that, we actually created some outdoor space, and we had picnic tables that was donated, and we used those. Every week, every Tuesday, we have a weekly barbecue since then. So we actually use the outdoor space more than the indoor space. The indoor space is used for monthly meetings, but every week in the summer, we use the outdoor space for barbecues and stuff. We also made the concrete patio with the wheelchair-accessible ramp. So that we wanted to extend over to the other side because there's some water issues there. We put in a new fire escape. And what else did we do? Yeah, removal of the deck. Wheelchair accessible. So this is also what we did on the other side. This is more for public use. We put in some picnic tables on the other side. We cleared out a lot of the trees because we couldn't really see down the river from the club. So we wanted to make it more beautiful and more aesthetic, I guess. So we put a couple picnic tables there and installed a walkway to walk down on one side of the dock because it was really dangerous. We had a few people actually get injured there going onto their boats and stuff. So we needed a ladder to get up and down the dock. So that currently isn't finished. We have to, we need more money to extend past that dock and maybe make a landing as well, with some benches so that visitors can sit and enjoy the view. Right now, when I go down, I just park in my vehicle and I sit there and watch, but it'd be nice to have a little place, a landing, to kind of see up and down the river. So this is the area along the building that we wanted to extend with the concrete so that, like right now where the concrete is, there's kind of a big step, so a wheelchair can't get into that side. So we would like to pave going into the entrance so that a wheelchair can go around from the patio to the front door. So that's kind of what we plan on doing as well. So this is just a little video that I put up. I don't know if I can press Enter, it'll go through. I don't know if there's sound. We don't need sound, though, it's okay. So yeah, so the club is asking for $3,500 to go towards the continuation of these projects on the outdoors. They estimate that the cost will cost approximately $6,000. So we are asking that $3,500 be granted to do these renovations and repairs. Is there anything else to add?
I don't have a lot to say, other than the fact that the extending of that walkway along the one side of the ramp, the ramp area, to get it out to the end and to have a little platform built at the end as an observation point, more than anything. We have a lot of people that'll come down, and they like to walk out there. Before that walkway was put in last year, it was just rock. And a lot of the rocks were getting loose because the underfill was washing away. With that walkway now, it makes it a whole lot easier with the guardrail. He's got a guardrail on it. It makes it just fantastic for people to walk out there. But we ran out of money. And so that's one of the things we're looking for, is to get us out to the end. Before you get out there, there's that little picnic area with the picnic tables as well, and that's another area that we're hoping, to make it accessible to everybody, not just club members, but to everybody in the area, anybody who wants to come down there, and to be comfortable and to be safe in their use of the club.
Counselor Cushing?
Yes. A question for you. I seen on your picture the dock, the dock extension over top of the rocks and whatnot, right? That was part of your plan also?
Sorry?
The dock that's going to go over top of the rocks?
Yes.
Okay? As part of your plan?
Yes.
Have you got the Department of Fisheries and Environment blessing on that to proceed with something like that?
We haven't.
Because I noticed some of the piles that are there now, they probably need to be replaced or the whole damn rocks have fallen in. So the Environment, Fisheries now is a pretty delicate issue, I would think, that you probably have to have permission first in order to do something like that.
We haven't approached the Department of Fisheries yet on any of the work that's going to be done at the end, down towards the end, because it wouldn't interfere, any of the work that we had, the work that we had planned originally, wouldn't interfere with anything other than what you see, just extending it on. It would not have interfered with the waterway or anything in that sense.
Yeah.
But it's a good point. It's a good point. Because when we do get out to that end, we will end up having to go into the water. And it's a good point. Well, we're definitely going to have to go to Fisheries probably to have them okay.
I would suggest, if I'm reading this correctly, that you just want to put the walkway out over top of the rocks.
Basically, that's it. It's to continue it out over the rocks, as you see there. You notice, if you notice in the one picture there at the end, you see how the piles, all the piles are on the facing of the rocks. The last pile at the end, there's actually, I don't think you can see it, I think there's actually two there. One is hidden behind the other. They sort of curve the corner, turn the corner. And the idea is, all the walkway that you see was just touching on the top of the rock in the back, but it's all attached to the piles on this side here, facing out this way. So the idea would be to extend it around, attached to the piles.
To the original piles that are there now.
To the original piles that are there. The only thing is, like you said, and it's incumbent upon us to do it, would be to check with Fisheries if, in fact, we interfere with any of the waterway or the use of the water or whatever on that end.
I would suggest that you contact Fisheries sooner than later, so sometimes the process is a little slow.
Good point.
That's my comments.
Thank you.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Do you have any need for fundraising at your facility there? Can you have a dance? Can you have a...
Yeah, I'm actually on the fundraising committee. And a few new things that we try to do, like every year we do a barbecue, and usually it's just for members, but friends of members, and we come and we do hot dogs and hamburgers, corn, it's like a corn boil. And the members and others pay $5 to come, and that's during the summer. We also do the, on June 9th, we have an annual kickoff dinner, and we usually do a live auction. So our president does the auction, and that's, people donate items, and we raise a little bit of money that way as well. So that's something that's been annual. And we're also looking at other ways to fundraise as well. I don't know if you can think of any other ones that, like, we really weren't very avid on fundraising at first because, like I said, the memberships and when people pay for a spot on the docks, that's the main source of revenue for the club. So we were hoping that, like, all of the money that is made from people paying their dues goes towards the docks. So that's why we're asking for funding, to make it more aesthetic and make it more beautiful because it is a hidden gem in our town. You know, everyone focuses on Main Street and downtown and stuff and areas, but the Chabot River Boat Club is a beautiful spot, and it should be utilized more. And we see the benefit of people coming down just to kind of sit by the river and watch the tides go up and down. It's beautiful, so...
The reason I was saying that is because something that has taken over around here is these kitchen parties that they have. There's one in Pembroke, there's one in South Ohio, and they seem to generate a lot of money.
Yes, actually, for the first time, when I jumped on board, we actually planned a kitchen party in Lobster Boil during Sea Fest weekend. It did coincide with the boat parade, sorry, the car parade. It was the same day as the car parade. So, I mean, the turnout wasn't great, but we did get a lot of tourists come by, and we had live lobster, and we got a grant for that. We had bought a liquor license. That didn't go so well, but, I mean, it does cost to put these things in order, but we did try. But we're hoping to maybe do it a different time of the year, maybe not with coinciding with Sea Fest, but we did do that, and it went over well. And instead of having a band or people, we had someone, one of our members play music and DJ, and it was fun. So we plan on doing more of that.
Sometimes we have an organization here that, once in a while, they're looking for places and have culture gatherings or historic, and that's YASTA. Are you aware of YASTA?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Cunningham? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Durkey. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you. Lost my train of thought there for a moment. Can visitors attend? Like, can you have boats come in at any time? And do they, do you charge a fee if you have a visitor from outside?
We tried a number of years ago to put something, get something out to make the club accessible to boats from, in fact, overseas, out of province, that type of thing, and all the rest of it. We actually had, over the years that I've been there, we've actually had people like that that come up the river, which is strange because it's not really a well-known place. And the fact is that it was only recently that the hydrographic services actually charted the river up as far as the boat club. In fact, they've gone past the boat club. I haven't seen the charts for that yet, but apparently they're out there. But the idea was to make the club accessible to these boats. When they do come up there, we were going to charge them. We had that in our mind, to charge them, but we're a little bit, we're not quite as organized as the council is, as this council is. And we never did charge. And after a while, we got to thinking that maybe it's not such a good idea to charge because it's, you know, give them a free pass, if you will, just for goodwill, for the goodwill that would instill. And that's basically what's happened over time. So we don't get a lot of visitors up that far up the river because of, like I say, the original charting and the fact that it's so far up. A lot of the boats that want to come up are boats like, would be sailboats, larger sailboats, and they have very deep keels, and they're very leery about coming up a river like that.
You have to navigate it really well.
It has to be done, it has to be done really diligently to save or keep yourself, so... But the idea is, yes, to allow boats, any boats that want to come up, come up. And we'll give, we've always got two places that we keep open for boats in that sense, in that regard.
Right. Thank you. What I see is, as Gerard mentioned, that our tourism association should know about your organization, and you should try and promote that because I can see, like, even small sailboats using your facility and coming up, tourists. It should be very tourist-friendly. And the other question is, do you have a website?
Yep. We do have a website, as well as we just, I kind of helped launch a Facebook page just to kind of get it out there, especially for our fundraising events that we did in the summer. But I would like to see maybe pamphlets made up, so maybe some, you know, we can look at seeing if we have money in our budget for, like I said, promotion. And I know YASTA, they do a great job. We did have an event planned this year, but it didn't go over well. It was between the stand-up paddle boards. Nancy's actually a member of our club, and so she was trying to promote some type of culinary experience on the river, but it was a little, I think it was priced high, and it didn't go over well. But we are trying to get it out there and to try to make it, you know, accessible to the public.
That would be great. Thank you.
Counselor Allen?
Yes, thanks for coming in. Just a couple of questions. Memberships, how many members do you have?
Right at the moment, I think there's roughly, it's kind of hard to tell, not on the membership committee. We're probably somewhere between 65 and 70.
And what kind of membership fees, like, I guess, I'm just kind of going at, what kind of membership fees do you charge to become a member of the aquatic club?
We have an associate membership for $65, and I'm going to say that the yearly membership for a full member was, I think it's $140. I think it's $140. Then there's the fees on top of that for the docks, for a finger place at the docks, and I believe that's $450 a year for that.
Okay. And so generally, like, I mean, I'm kind of familiar with the river, and I know how hard it is to navigate up there. I've got friends that travel it quite often, and it's pretty scary sometimes, especially low water. So does the aquatic club, do you operate all year? Do you operate year-round or just summer months?
It's operated year-round in the winter time, like, through this time of year until the floats are actually in. Basically, the only activity that we have are the occasional, we may have an occasional function through the winter. We have monthly meetings. We have our meetings, in fact, we'll have one tomorrow night. And we have one every month through the winter and keep it up.
And you have, now, do you already, I'm assuming that this work's going to take place regardless, so have you already done fundraising to pay for part of this?
We will have, we will have our fundraising done. Generally, we look at having a function in May. It's usually like a supper with entertainment and prizes that we give, prizes and that. And that's usually the big one that we plan every May. I was talking with the president, and he looking at doing it again this year. He was looking at stepping back from it himself because he was the driving force behind that, but he's still planning on having it regardless, whether he does it or somebody else does.
And just last question, I know you're not on the membership committee. Most of your members, do you know what area they're from?
Sorry?
I said, most of your members, do you know what area? Like, are they from, are they from Chabot Rockville area? Are they from, some from Argyle? Are they from town? You know, generally, like, the populace of your members?
I don't know why, but I was sort of anticipating that question today, and I was sort of thinking about it before I got here. I would have to say probably the majority of the people, the majority of the people at the club are from the municipality. There's people like me live in town.
Yes.
That live, lives in town. There are a few that would live outside in Argyle, for instance, in the municipality of Argyle. But the majority, the vast majority of them would be from within the municipality. There's a number of people from Chabot, but, like I said...
But it is spread out.
But it is spread, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Another thing I want to add as well, before I forget, is last year, we installed a sponsorship shine on our building. So if any of you have been there, we were debating on where to put it, if we should put it at the road, but it's right on our building. And it actually, that's a source of revenue that we're looking to have as well. So we asked that people pay, you know, a yearly fee to keep their name up on our sponsorship board. There's about, I think there's 12 spots, and then there's one main sponsor that we have, which is Scotiabank. So, yeah, so that's another source of revenue that we have for the club as well. So we are, like I said, we do, we are doing things in and around the community and in our club, and we just want to make you aware. That's why, you know, we really like, we feel that this is such a gem, and we want you to be a part of it because it is a great, great part of our community.
Go ahead, counselor.
Mr. Chair, just to make you aware, my light doesn't blink, so I've got the solicitor's mics on.
Oh, okay.
I guess I can interrupt whenever I wish now, but I'll be good, I promise. So, in any event, good presentation, and, you know, I just noticed last year's ferry traffic. There were a number of people, I was surprised by how many people came across with boats, believe it or not, towing boats behind. So that may be, if bay ferries could make them aware that, and I know there's lots of places to put boats in, but that's a particularly nice place that you've got there. And I do understand that volunteer groups, it's difficult to, obviously, I've done some fundraising, I know that's a difficult task, but it is a real asset, and articulately stated, it is within the municipality of Yarmouth. So, I mean, for those reasons, I think it's a real asset in terms of, you know, being able to attract people to our area, boaters and that type of thing. So maybe we could work together, you know, to, and through YASTA, to maybe point a few more folks in your area that are, because I know there's a number of people come across with boats. And in fact, I'm hoping if it's okay to go down and maybe put in there. I've only got a few kayaks, but we thought we might do the Chabot River this summer. I've never done that, so I'm hoping to do that. So thank you very much, and certainly be supportive during the grants process.
Thank you.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Maybe if you have a chance, YASTA is here.
Yes.
Okay, you know where they are there? Might be a good idea to just go say hi, you know?
Is it, what's his name? Who?
Neil McKenzie, and there's Charles Robbie Show that takes care of a lot of events and that.
Because they put out, do they put out a pamphlet every year, or they put out something every year, right? Okay, great.
If I may add one final thing, just as an aside, last year at one time, I was down on the club, and I was out on the floats. And I turned around and I looked, and I saw an entire family walking down the floats. It turns out that there's a family from, an Indian family, East Indian, with, I think there were three children and the two adults, male and female. They were coming down the floats, and I thought this was odd. I went up to them and asked what was going on, if I could help them out. They were down visiting, right next door to the club. Now there's a bed and breakfast. And these people were staying at the bed and breakfast. And what I've seen since then, since they started the bed and breakfast, is that there's an awful lot of people at that bed and breakfast. If you know the place at all, you know the area, there was the old craft building right next door to the club. They've turned that into a bed and breakfast now. And there's people coming there on a regular basis, like, through the summer last year, they were coming, like, every two or three days, there'd be somebody different there. And sometimes there's a family, sometimes it's just a couple. But those people, when they look for something to do, they come walking out onto that property, but they also tend to come over onto our property so that they can go out to the end and look up and down the river. And that's one of the things that you said about that walkway and getting out there because that is based, that is right on that property, and that gives them the opportunity, that would give them the opportunity to get right out, basically, over the water. So I just thought I'd mention that, too.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, before you leave, before you leave, I read through your request and so on, that both the RCMP, Ground Search and Rescue, Department of Fisheries, used the facilities, the ramp, the slipway.
And others, anyone really does, yep.
Well, that was the point I wanted you to bring forward here when Counselor Cunningham mentioned about kayaks. There's a lot of people that go kayaking and so on on there that aren't members and so on, but they have the use of the facility and so on. There is also a lot of people that just take their boat on a Sunday, put it in, and go for, I'll call it a Sunday drive on the water, out through as far as Crawley's and so on, and just to see the scenery and so on, because it is a beautiful river. And as you've mentioned, some people go up, well, I'll say up as far as Arcadia on a high tide. You can go all the way up. It is, it's an asset to the Chabot area. It's also a very important asset to the municipality of Yarmouth. So on behalf of us here, thank you to your club members for doing the work that they're doing and so on. And council will be looking in our grant requests and so on, at your proposal and so on, and to go further there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you have anything? Yes, one question, should be...
Sorry, can I just throw in one question there before?
Turn your mic on.
Sorry, it is on.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, to hold you up for a little bit, but just a quick question on your operating expenses, just so I'm clear. There's, you know, your total budget for the year is $24,282, and there's a line item of $5,500 for phase two upgrades. So that's the project you're talking about now? That's included in your operating budget, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. The other question I have is, I'm just curious about, there's a line item for a survey for natural resources of $4,500, which is about 20% of your total operating budget. So I'm just curious, is there an issue or concern there with title or survey, and why would that be your responsibility, I wonder, to do that? Do you know the...
Sorry.
I'm just curious about the detail behind the line item on your expense estimates for a $4,500 survey for DNR.
That would, Don Goudy would probably know more about that. He's our treasurer, and so he's the one who sent all that information. I don't know a lot about the finances, but he would probably be better...
Could you, could you maybe mention that to him and send back a note to me or us?
So what was it, just the expense, DNR?
There's a line item for a required survey for DNR.
Required survey, okay.
It's listed at $4,500, and I'm just curious what's behind that.
Sure.
I might be able to address some of it, but my hearing isn't the greatest, and I'm having a little bit difficulty understanding it.
Okay. The serve, there's a line item on your expense budget this year of $4,500 for a D survey for natural resources. So I'm just curious about that. Is there causing, any cause of concern that we, with land title or...
You said it's an expense? You said it's an expense.
It's on your expense side of your ledger.
A number of years ago, we realized that our footprint from the club out over the water was getting extended out. We were extending too far, a little bit further to the north than what we should be, if you understand riparian rights and that sort of thing. So what we wanted to do, we wanted to make sure that we were covered. So we were looking... So we were looking at extending to the northward, over the marsh, uh, from the club, out to the north, a certain distance, that would give us the, basically the rights over here. What we had to do, we had to have a surveyor come in. We had a surveyor come in, this was a, maybe about five years ago. He came in, he did the survey, then he went away and nobody has heard from him since. And so it's just at the ti- just now that we want to try and make this right, because that property next door has, has changed the ownership and all that and we want to make sure that we're, we're covered and whatnot. And that's probably what we're referring to here.
So it was already done, it must have been already done, right?
I can tell you that they've already had the surveyor down, they've already had a surveyor there. From what I understand, it was finalized, everything was sorted out uh, here last, last week or the week before. Something that had been, been ongoing uh, for most of this year, in fact. Whether or not that's actually, the forty-five hundred has actually been paid out or whatever, I can't, I can't speak to that. But I know that from what I, from my understanding is that it was sorted out. They have, they have some sort of a work, working, working arrangement with the people next door and that sort of thing, so.
I, yeah, but you still want, should still have Don?
Yeah, Don.
Get in touch with you and, and have a, and maybe even have a, uh, I'll call it a deed or something.
Yeah, sure, yep.
Yeah, okay.
A receipt or, yes, yep, sure.
Okay, again, thank you very much.
Thanks.
That's right too, I remember.
I, 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 thank you, Mr. Warden, I, I think you'll be okay right there, will you?
I have a chair.
Right here, oh, you need a chair, right. Okay, there we go. Well, over here.
There you go.
There. You're here for the, you're here for the day. You're here for the day. A new member of council. A new member of council. Yes, I will, uh, myself, I'm, I'm Don McCumber, uh, chairman of the, the van fundraising committee. And we have Alvedetto, he is our zone twelve commander. We have Carol Cutro, who is the recreation facilitator for Veterans Place. And we have comrade Miff O'Connell, who is a World War Two veteran who was involved with the Italian campaign. That's the delegation. Would you like me to proceed? Mr. Warden and deputy warden, councillors and staff, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to our application for support of a new van purchased for the veterans residing at Veterans Place here in Yarmouth. I certainly do not have to make you aware of our organization as all of you have attended many of our local events and know the importance of the Royal Canadian Legion within your community. As you know, our mandate is to look after our veterans and their dependents. The Legion in Zone Twelve, which includes Yarmouth, Wedgeport, West Pubniko, Cape Sable and Lockport, are all indeed working and meeting their obligations to our veterans' needs. One such need was identified some time ago and that was the need to replace the seventeen-year-old van at Veterans Place. This van has become outdated and the cost to keep the van up to standard is very high. Recently, the van needed repairs which cost us, or the, the facility, facilities, some sixteen thousand dollars. We have embarked on projects to raise funds. Uh, just to give you an update, we have approached the other municipalities, the municipality of Argyle and we have made presentation to the, the town of, of, of Yarmouth. We have a lady that has come forward, Mary Loy, who did some fundraising when we, they, we were all aware, are aware of that tragedy, of the young kids that were, were burned. And uh, she did an online auction and raised some forty-four thousand dollars towards that project. She approached us and asked us if she could come on board to help us. So she's, is now in the process of doing an online auction for us and seeking donations and also seeking donated items that she will be starting to auction off April the fifteenth. And she'll be running that auction for a week. She also has a, um, a lady, Joanne Lee Ross Parker, who I believe is from the Port Maitland area, working with her as well. So we have that project on the go and also uh, recently I went to Kingston. They put on a comedy theater production and had a dance after at the Kingston Legion, which was a good fundraiser. And the committee has approved to look at doing that project uh, in September. And we do have uh, Colin, Colin Fraser on board and he is going to be working with us to, and Zach Churchill hopefully, to sponsor that, that event for, for a fundraiser. So we're here today to, to tell you that there, there certainly is a need for the van and uh, and that's why we have requested a donation from this municipality. So I'm going to turn the, the, the mic over to, to Carol. Carol's going to go through a few slides with you just to show you the use of this van for our veterans. So Carol? Whoops, okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Can we go back? I just hit enter. Back? There we go, okay.
This is one of the projects that we do, we recycle all our bottles and cans from the unit and then uh, we throw them on the bus and we take them to the recycling plant. So that's one of our projects that we do at the home. Uh, this is one of our many, many outings to Maple Grove for their Remembrance Day service. Here they are, the kids walking Miff up to the, to the doors. And that's Mr. Del Bay. So we've got a big loss with the Memorial Club being gone too. Here we are, Mr. Gray being sung to. And... This one was when they honored the Korean veterans. Uh, we only had one Korean veteran at the time, but we all, we all honored his, his service and all, all of us went to their service at, at Maple Grove. Uh, this is one of our many summer outings, we go to uh, picnic areas. We, we've been as far as, as Shellburn, all the way around to the valley, we've gone to see the punkin people. Um, this one here is, I believe we are at Ellenwood and it is the meadows that is with us having a picnic and we always have some games or something and... That's the crowd there again at... We get to see their old buddies and, oh, this is when the snowbirds were in town. We had a special invitation to go see the snowbirds and we had a special area in the tent. Um, they allowed us to drive right up to the tent and drop them off and then we'd just park the van close by. And that's the same service. Uh, this is out in um, Argyle, we went to the Sugar Shack where they make uh, maple syrup. Jimmy Conrad, in case any of you guys know him. They, uh, they make a big pot of seafood chowder for the guys and homemade bread and, and desserts. And then he shows us how they make the, the maple syrup and obviously you can see the guys are having a great time and just relaxing by the fire. Uh, here we are again, he's, I think he's doing demonstration there. I believe this one is Remembrance Day, the guys are all dressed up and ready to, to go and obviously you can see the bus is not equipped for, for everybody, we have two volunteers sitting on this big box we have in there. Uh, we've gone to Wesleyan Church to play pool, they offered us free service, so we've been there a few times. And of course the Mariner Center on Remembrance Day. Yep, that's the Mariner Center again, Memorial Club. And back to the beginning, that's just some of the pictures that I, I put together, but I said we've been as... The undercarriage of the bus and that cost us six thousand, that was one chunk. Um, and then after that, it's just been like two, three thousand dollars just, but it's a lot when it adds up, so. And that's only been probably the past five, six years, we've had to dump that money into it, yeah.
Councillor Christian?
Yes, uh, first of all, I want to thank the veterans for your service for, for our country, I really appreciate that. Um, my second question is, I noticed a picture of your van and it's a, it's a guardian one, uh, guardianbluebird.com. Drumerville, Quebec is where, I understand is being built. Uh, has TriStar been approached on this?
Uh, yes, I, I did uh, go to TriStar and at the beginning, because I thought we should certainly look locally and uh, met with one of the employ- the, the employee there. And they were not interested in building a whole new, new one. What, what they did say was that, and they spoke highly of this company um, that we're dealing with. And they said that if in future there was any repairs or anything like that that needed to be done to the van, that they would, you know, certainly offer their services and that they, as I said, they, that they were uh, aware of Jardine in, in Quebec. And also, uh, I checked with a couple of uh, the other locations uh, that they had provided vans to for legions and community and uh, the results that I got from them were favorable in the service that they had received.
Okay, yes.
Good, that's uh, that certainly clarifies a lot of their, because TriStar is, is geared to do ambulances, right? So, but it's, it's good that they're willing to step up and do any maintenance costs and whatnot, so, very good, thank you.
Was there any further?
Uh, I, just, I, I, there may be some other speakers could, or do you want to do the?
Well, I'm not sure if councillor Cunningham, you have a question you want to ask or?
Yeah, I mean, just, just to comment and uh, that, you know, nothing is any more important than, than the veterans for, for, all across Canada and the world essentially, so um, you know, supportive of the, of the ask. And, and I know if the van's seventeen years old and the van needs replaced, you know, I mean, just...
We don't travel too far nowadays.
It, it, it happens, so, anyway, thank you for the presentation and the time and, and for you all coming in.
Yes, I just wonder if uh, uh, comrade Miff, did you want to add anything to the presentation? I'm going to ask the zone commander to, to find...
Amazing, amazing.
Okay, I'm going to just, uh, I'm going to ask the zone commander for, for a few comments and words with regards to the van purchase, go ahead.
Ward? Well, my voice is loud enough. What I would like to say is I've just been, as of December passed, I've just been appointed as the, the zone commander of this area, of, of what Don mentioned, those five branches, those are my branches that I, I look after. And uh, I'm in the process right now of having all five involved with raising donations for our van. And the van, we need a total of a hundred and four thousand dollars, I know Mr., for this van so that we can help out the veterans of the, the wing here at the hospital. And I would appreciate it if you people can be kind and give us a donation of some sort. I know I cannot ask you for the, the whole bundle, but it would be priceless if you would. But uh, you know, but it would be appreciated, like Don said, and uh, and our little group here that would appreciate any kind of a donation from you folks and whatever. And uh, and if you need within anything uh, through the Legion, well, I have a card here I'll give to you, uh, Warden. You could always contact us and if we can help you out in any way, on a volunteer basis, we'll, we'll be very proud to help you and so on. And just so that you are aware of one thing, this gentleman is a veteran, I'm an associate. I'm the son of a veteran, also my father is a veteran, he'd served his, uh, his six years in England and that's where he met my mother in England. So she became a war bride and I became a war baby, okay? And I was brought over here to Canada on July sixth, nineteen forty-six, just over a year old. So I've been a Canadian for that amount of time in my head, but my mother, God bless her, passed away, always said I was full British, okay? So I always had to...
We won't hold that against you.
Well, I've been very fortunate, nobody has, so. But any rate, uh, and like I was going to say, between Don and I, with volunteering and being part of the Legion, I believe we have a total of ninety-six, ninety-five or ninety-six years total between the two of us of being involved with the Legion. And so he and I have been through a lot with veterans and so on and, and like this gentleman here. Yeah, and what he, what he is, uh, he has at that Veterans Place, they're wonderful. And as you can see, he's a very happy gentleman.
Yes.
You know, and I love, I, I love the stories this fellow can give me, you know, and so on and uh... He'll always tell you the good part, but never the sad, okay? Which is perfect. And that, and uh, that's about it, but like I say, uh, here's two fellows here that have served over ninety years with Royal Canadian Legion.
I guess then at this time, does staff have any questions? I only have a couple of quick comments and so on and you highlighted them right to start. I didn't realize that the amount of traveling and the distance, you said you go to the valley and so on. Uh, I didn't realize, I figured, I'm going to be honest, that you basically only done with around here. Some of the veterans at the Veterans Place, from how far away do you have veterans come? Do they come from the valley or are they just from Yarmouth County?
We have had them as far away as Digby.
Okay.
And I believe the furthest one might be Lockport.
Okay, because my question was going to be, where is the next veterans' uh, facility in, I'll say Nova Scotia or this area or whatever?
Uh, they're pretty equal distance from Yarmouth, one is in Lunenburg.
Okay, so there's one.
And then one is in Middleton.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is that. You made the comment that you were looking at your five... You made the comment that you were looking at your five Legions to go and look for, because do, your van doesn't do anything for, for Lunenburg. You may go to Lunenburg for a function, but you don't loan your van to them?
No.
No. This, this van is for, I'll say, from Lunenburg to Middleton.
Yep.
That's the, the facility or the area that you can cover and so on. Uh, the amount of veterans at Veterans Place now, are you, are you full or is it a?
We have eleven right now.
You have eleven?
Yeah.
And so on?
And we're fifteen.
Fifteen, so you're at a, at a comfortable, so there is some speak. Oh, yes. Yeah, well, yes, no, in that respect. The other question, the other comment, uh, that I want to make, and I, I know where, I'm quite sure where my fellow councilors stand. You, uh, made the, you mentioned, uh, sir, about the ask of asking, and I know where the municipality would stand and so on, but I want to make a comment to your, when you said that, your ask. Well, quite a few years ago, there wasn't an ask and gentlemen like, uh, Miff and so on answered that ask without a, without a thought. And, uh, so I, I appreciate it and I think my fellow councilors, because we're here today running in a, in a society, you know, because of the ask that he done without even giving it a thought. So I'm quite sure that council will look fairly favorable at your request in our budget deliberations and so on. And, uh, again, thank you very much for your service and so on. I really appreciate it.
We thank you also.
Okay, thank you. Just before we, we end, I also want to, uh, thank you and members of council for your cooperation, uh, when the branch closed at Port Maitland here and the work that was done on the, the Senatath. The staff were excellent. I want to thank Elizabeth for her, uh, for her assistance and, and the staff's assistance in, in getting that project completed. And I certainly hope that everybody was happy with the end result of the, uh, the Senatath. It looks good and, uh, and I just wanted to thank you for the, the cooperation of this council. So thank you very much.
I would ask the councilors to, uh, get up and to shake the hands.
Is there, uh, is there anyone that, that has a camera that could take a photo? Is there anybody that has a camera that could take a photo with your council and, and, and Miff? I think it would be nice to have that photo. Yeah. Oh, yes. Oh, is that correct? Really? Really?
Make sure you get my good side.
I, I will.
Good luck with that.
Oh!
We're, we're going to get all counting down.
Almost. Oh, we got you. We got you all.
There you go. There you go.
Just let me take your couple. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Is that your back? Is that your neck?
No, that's bent.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Thanks again, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Slowly.
Good, right? And you?
Looking for a little garb of the snap array.
And we'll go.
So just a little gold bar? If you find. I don't see, I don't see it here. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ian.
Four point three, grant request, Coal Shed Music Festival. Phil, Camille, you have the floor, sir. Yes, please. And before you start, I have a quick comment to make. I know your, your father served during the, the Second World War. Sure did. And, uh, during, uh, his time, uh, being a farmer, I can remember the first time I met your dad was on a cold, cold winter night. Your father had purchased a farm tractor and a manure spreader from us. Uh, we at that time didn't have a delivery truck. It was on order and so on. And I can remember driving, uh, the, the tractor and the manure spreader over to your father's place and it was cold and it was dark. And when I got there, your father was working in the barn and your mom took me in the house, sat me down by the stove, undressed me because I was cold and so on, and gave me something to eat and then your father came in. It was the first time I met your dad. Yeah. And we had a lot of good conversations over that, uh, period of time and so on. And I don't think I've ever told you this, and, uh, one time you asked me to come over to do some work on the farm tractor, which I did. It was around milking time and he was in the barn and I was working on the tractor right there beside the house. Your father walked out of the barn, come over to me and told me one story of the war. I never asked no questions. He turned around and went back into the barn. Yeah. Never, ever, ever spoke again to me and so on about the war. But for whatever reason, he came out of the barn that evening, come over, told me a story and so on, eh? And I. Do you know, you know what his job was in the war? Yes. Drove an ammunition truck to the lines. All the way through, right straight from England, all the way through to Germany and kept every one of the tickets. And that's, uh, when he came home, his biggest, saddest part, somebody stole him. That was his memento. That was the only thing he said he was bringing home and somebody stole every one of those tickets. Showed him, eh? Yeah. He said right from England, right into Germany, he said it went all the way. He did. Never forgot it. Yeah. He had some stories to tell. He wouldn't tell many, that's for sure. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, Phil, the floor is yours, sir. Yes. Well, I haven't done a presentation here before this group for quite a number of years, so I thought maybe it was time. I have to do it every year before the town. Anyway, we'll get into that another day. You know me, I say what I think. This is our twelfth anniversary. We started very small. It was kind of a combined effort in the beginning. Um, the thought was that, uh, we had a beautiful facility, a beautiful waterfront that was not being used anywhere to, to its maximum. That's, uh, an understatement and, and, uh, I guess perhaps as a result of some of those conversations, I was presented with a challenge. If you think you've got something better to offer in the waterfront, why don't you do something about it? I said, well, if you give me the chance, I'll try. And that's where we started. We had a two-day event and that was back in, in two thousand and seven. This is our twelfth anniversary coming up this year. It's now a nine-day event. It should be a twelve-day event. The only reason that it isn't is because we don't have the money. That's basically it. Hopefully in years to come, it will, it will expand further. I'd love to see it tie in with the Warfrat Rally and I think I could make that happen. It starts on August 10th this year. It runs for nine days. I think that there's many things that perhaps people have to take a moment out to, to stop and realize about our festival. It's unique. It's gained a reputation across all of Eastern Canada, not just locally. I had a call, for instance, just yesterday from an agent in Boston. He was gung ho to bring groups in here. I said, look, I'd love to, this is the second time he's called me, by the way. I said, I'd love to do it, but I don't have the money to do it. It's as simple as that. Uh, I'm getting pressure on one side to charge admission. I've already told them if they want to charge admission, get somebody else to run the event because it won't be me. The facility is not designed in any way, shape or form to charge admission. If people want to make donations at the door, fine and dandy. We are volunteers, my wife and I, we don't even take our phone bill out of it. So it's, if, if you have any thoughts of us gaining in a monetary way, I can assure you that is not happening. We do take donations. We have some excellent regular sponsors in the community who have helped us since day one. Reality is we've reached a point where we need more sponsors. Having said that, in the last sixteen or eighteen months, we've lost two major sponsors. One of them is The Vanguard due to a change of ownership and the other one is The Old Mill Restaurant. She give me a thousand dollars every year since day one in two thousand and seven. I don't know what the new people will do. I haven't got the guts to walk in there when they're renovating the place and haven't even got it open and say, listen, I need a thousand dollars. They probably put me out in the middle of the street. So I may at least give them one year's grace before I hit them again. But, but the point is we've lost substantial sponsors in, in those two and we're, we're frantically trying to regain that loss. It's non-profit, as I've already indicated to you. It's a major fundraiser for two things. The Food Bank, which basically takes care of their own, uh, e- event on the waterfront, but we are mostly concerned with the school breakfast program. And in the past twelve months, we've given them well over forty-five hundred dollars in the local schools. And I'm not talking just the town schools. Please understand. We go to Carleton, we go to Port Maitland, we go to Meadowfields, they're all covered. Even Plymouth, the last two years, we've given a thousand dollars to. People don't realize that. The only one that we miss is the high school and I think by the time you get to be seventeen, you should be able to start taking care of yourself a little bit. Having worked with them for thirty-plus years, I think I'm a fair judge of that. We involve over two hundred musicians at the present time. We have kitchen parties going on, we have seminars. It's not just talent on the stage. We are not a specific sort of design of music, uh, festival. In other words, we're not a bluegrass festival, we're not a country music festival, we're an all-music festival. We try to take in all aspects of music in every way, shape or form. And as a result, I'm not patting ourselves on the back, I don't think, I'm just stating the fact that it has gained a very positive reputation both within this community and beyond. I'm going to give you a conservative estimate of the number of people that, uh, attend per year. And this is a tough one because we don't actually sell tickets. But looking at it as a three-day event each weekend of three weekends, it certainly would be fair to say that each one of those days from opening at twelve until eleven or so at night, it would involve a thousand people per day, which translates into nine thousand people in the month of August, which really is more than the population of the town. So I guess the message or bottom line there is everybody benefits. You know, they, they buy gas here, they, many of them stay here overnight, they go to restaurants, whatever. It has, it has many purposes. I would say the festival has many purposes and it, it certainly is intended to spotlight talent as, as one of the things and it has really drawn a lot of amazing talent out of the woodwork. Having said that, we don't only, you know, cater to the amateurs, we've had some Juno Award winners down there performing. We've had people like Laurel, Laurel Smith, for instance, Hal Bruce, John Gracie, and every one of them, every one of them call back, is there any chance we can come back next year? That's the, to me, is the telltale right there. If they didn't want to come back, that would tell a totally different story, but they all want to come back. And I've had to say in some cases, look, I can't, I just simply can't have you every year because we don't have the dollars to cover it, you know? We pay very, very low wages to these people who perform. I can guarantee the musicians fifty dollars apiece, up to two hundred dollars an hour. And when you get guys like, uh, well, for instance, Hal Bruce, who just is just getting back this week from, uh, Central America, performing down there for the past number of months, as, as well as doing a series of cruise ships, I'm sure he's getting more than two hundred dollars an hour for those performances. But they do it because they believe in what we're doing and they see it as a great opportunity. We have songwriting seminars, we have instrument building seminars, we have, as I've said before, the kitchen parties. We've got some really exciting things in the works for this year. We have the, uh, kind of the reenactment of the Sing Along Jubilee Days that many of you would remember from TV. We've got Garth Proud, who's Ann Murray's bass player. We've got Georgia Bear, who's Ann Murray's guitar player. They've both set in my kitchen and had lobsters more than once and they're coming this year and they're all excited about doing it. We've also got Terry Kelly coming and a couple of other very strong possibilities. We're trying to build the thing because it's almost become, uh, well, it's become, uh, uh, more than a hobby for us. We really feel that it's doing, uh, a service to the community and, uh, we would like very much to have the municipality more involved. I, don't get me wrong, I appreciate anything that you've done for us in the past, but we've reached a stage where we need more involvement than we've had. We cannot operate that festival right now for less than eighteen thousand dollars. And that does not include the sound system, which in the beginning, the town agreed to pay for, which was right around nine thousand dollars. It is become, oh yeah, it's nine thousand bucks a year to provide the town, the, the sound system and the sound man. Uh, the first argument against that is people say, well, why don't you go out and contract it? I can give you a real simple reason for that. You start contracting for that and you're, you're playing the odds. You might get a good year and you might get a bad year. And if you get some, some guy there with a poor quality sound system who doesn't know what he's doing, you could ruin the festival in one year. We've got a good man, Larry does an excellent job. He means nothing to me, he's just a member of the community, but we're supporting a local, a local, uh, business person and he is very professional and he's got top quality equipment. So I have no problem with him receiving the money that he receives. He is the only paid person other than the musicians themselves. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. If I can answer it, I'll tell you.
Okay. Counselor Cushing?
Yes, uh, a couple of interesting notes that you made there, you Phil, and, uh, and it's, it's certainly been successful. And you're talking roughly about nine thousand people.
When you're talking roughly about 9,000 people attending, can you mention the economic impact that's making on the town?
And the town.
In some of the surrounding areas. But the food purchases, the craft shops along waterfront, they probably do very well off, you know, from that, and there's probably some overnight stays too.
Oh, lots, lots, hotels are really good.
It's a very important aspect of the whole weekends. Another point I wanted to bring up, when you bring some of these guests in, you can always use your community hall to host a little thing, because of the historic value there and whatnot, so it may be interesting or something like that.
Okay, yeah, sure, sure. I'm wide open to suggestions, always, you know, that to me is the only way something like this can grow.
Not that we want a big crowd or anything, but just give them an opportunity to come down and see what it's like.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely, you're very welcome.
Counselor LeBlanc?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Yeah, yeah. I've played a couple of...
I can't understand it, I'm only 12, how did I do all this?
I don't know, I don't know. I've played there at the Coal Shed a couple of times for you.
Yes.
Or for the people, or anyways, and one thing, I remember the first time that I played, and you paid me, and I was very surprised, because I thought it was all volunteer, huh? And which I, I didn't decline, I took it.
Why would you decline?
But anyhow...
Your time is as good as anybody else's.
I think this is something, Phil, that you've done, I, I think that's a great thing that you and Janet have taken up in the last 12 years, did you say?
12 years.
Holy macro goes by past that.
Possibly could be, but it is.
I'm sure that everybody appreciates it. I haven't been there, I misconfess, I haven't been there in a couple of years. Guess I'm getting older than you, you're not getting old, but I am. But anyways, keep up the good work, and I support, I support that, even though that I haven't been there for a couple of years.
Oh, you know, I realize, I look around the room, and I know some of you are there on a regular basis in summer, but hey, I don't go, I don't go to hockey games, nothing against them, I just have too much other things, too many other things to do, you know?
But anyways, I support you 100%.
Thank you.
So, and good luck.
Thank you.
Deputy Warden, or Deputy Warden, I'm trying to turn you on, there you go.
Thank you very much, Phil. It's funny, you mentioned that sometimes we have other things to do, but there's one thing that I do enjoy, I might not go there for a very long time, but it's sometimes it's a little bit of relaxation, just to get away from the daily hustle and bustle throughout our daily lives. I do know that this event is very successful, one thing that I'd like to note, that's in your presentation here, in 2016 and 2017, YASTA awarded you for the Best Live Music, which is something...
Yes, two years in a row.
Two years in a row.
We're very honored to receive that.
So that shows you something right there, that's not something that you've gone out and advertised and pushed with, can you vote for me? This is something that just the people in Yarmouth County who were ever voted for that, just...
I was shocked the first year, I couldn't believe it.
So that just goes to show you're doing something right, and also, it says here that you're advertising down the Doors and Dreamers.
Yes.
So, which is certainly going to hit a lot more people, especially the captive audience...
And again, that's nothing that we did, that's something that YASTA did, I presume, I don't know.
Absolutely, YASTA sees a value in what you do, and we're looking for experiences and stuff that happens on the waterfront, we also have a captive audience coming across on that ferry, so when they're sitting there in their lounge or something waiting, and all of a sudden they open up, hmm, what can we do in Yarmouth?
Well, you know, you run against, or run up against some interesting situations, for instance, in the past couple of years, we've had more than one call where a person has said, "Could you give me the dates for your festival? We're planning a family reunion, and we want to make sure it coincides with those dates." That's happened more than once. We have more than one family from the States who come in on a regular basis, and have done so for what, fourth or fifth year now? One guy's a retired professor from New York, he doesn't know I'm a Red Sox fan, I won't tell him yet, but... Last night, 14 to 1, life is good. But anyway, it's drawing a lot of people in from other places, which I know would not come here if it were not for the activities that the community represents. Yes, they stay three weeks in the area.
Yeah, so that just goes to show you what this event has become, I wasn't in council at the very start, but I remember the very early days, the first couple of years, when I first got on council, how small it was.
Very small.
And you've seen a need in the area, and thank you very much for putting your name forward and doing it.
Hey, we're just a small part of it, I'm not trying to suggest that, you know, it's just us, because we do some of the organizing of it, but it's the people of the community and beyond who've made it happen.
Oh, absolutely.
It's the coordinating part that we do, you know, and that's just like trying to put together a puzzle, but other than that, the talent part of it is out there.
Well, one thing that I particularly like, like, sometimes I like to listen to country, sometimes I like rock and roll, and you have such a mix, it's not just a bluegrass festival, it's not just a country-western.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I know, well, you hear it on the news all the time, that even some of the well-known festivals in the Maritimes are having some financial problems, because their ticket prices have reached the stage where the average person can't afford them. You know, the big folk festival, Stan Rogers Festival, last year, what were the tickets for one day, $60 or something, $60 or $65 for a day? Come on, that eliminates half your buying population, or more, you know, it's just beyond. I like this event to appeal and attract people who work part-time in a store, single-parent families, you name it, those people, to me, should be made as welcome as somebody who can afford to walk in and drop a $50 bill on the donation jar. You know, I like to see them all there, I'd like that to continue, and that's why I'm so opposed to this idea of charging an admission. Does that make sense?
Well, that makes perfect sense to me, because there's lots of people around in our community that cannot afford to feed themselves, let alone go and have some entertainment, and there's also, I should mention, I've given rides to a couple people, a couple seniors that don't get out, and they love it. Just to get out the social aspect of...
Absolutely.
Of the whole thing.
It's just like a big family reunion down there at times. I had one person, and I'm certainly not going to get into names and personalities, but one person who should know better, say to me, "You know, you should have an executive section in your seating." We're not Maple Leaf Gardens, you know, an executive section, give me a break.
Well, that's one thing that I particularly enjoy about the event that goes on down at the waterfront, the Coal Shed, is come as you are.
That's right.
Come to have some fun and listen to some music.
Exactly the way we want it.
And that's the reason why I like it so much.
Thank you, appreciate that a lot.
Counselor Ricky?
Thank you, thank you, Phil and Janet, again, this is, the Coal Shed is an amazing music venue for everybody, and I love that anybody and everybody can attend, but I'm just wondering, in terms of, you know, you're getting to a point, and I know voluntarily, you know, at some point you get burnt out, and then what happens, you know, if you're not going to do it anymore, but the, but what I'm thinking is, have you ever considered just one event where you charged money? You'd said you have people coming that want to come from Boston, but we can't afford to pay for it, like, just one night, one, like, it's free for the rest of the time, but just one concert that you charge.
I really, I really don't think the venue is designed for that, you know, with all due respect, it would be extremely difficult to police that. And you're entering another whole, another whole section of red tape, you get into the, you know, the entertainment tax and all that kind of stuff. I remember years ago, we brought in an event, and we rented Burridge, and we brought in this person, because that particular person had been here before, and attendance was super, and they asked, and this was back when we had a music store, that's how our back it goes, and they said, "Would you consider doing this?" And at the time, you know, okay, we'll give it a try, see what happens. So we did, we rented Burridge, and we had to guarantee this performer X number of dollars. So we came up with a ticket price, whatever it might have been at the time, I can't even remember. Well, the next thing I knew, I had the entertainment tax gentleman sitting beside me, from the beginning to the end. We sold, I think, 12 tickets, so that at the end of the night, we lost several hundred dollars, but I still had to pay the entertainment tax guy. And his hotel bill, thank you, which didn't thrill me, to put it bluntly. You know, I see your point, I'd love to see somebody do that, but I don't think it's us. I would rather it stay where it is, and develop it the way it's going now, and oddly enough, many of those same people who were inquiring, this guy yesterday, for instance, said, "There's going to come a time when we'll be able to afford to do that." You know, some of these people who've won Juno Awards are working for the same money that some of the locals are, because they want to be a part of it. It's the best kind of exposure. When you perform in front of a crowd, a small community like this, you've got people from everywhere, it's terrific of exposure. So, you know, I'm not against the idea, but I personally don't want to be involved.
Fair enough.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yeah, I just want to mention, Phil, I don't know if you're aware, but I think one of your, they're supporting musicians, passed away, you know?
Danny Doucet?
Yes.
Yes, yes, well, I only heard late last night, yes. Yeah, he's been very much involved, yes.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, thank you for the very good presentation, and I've been out a few times, and it is, it's fantastic, it's a good use of the waterfront with the tents and all that type of thing, and very well organized, and good music, and I'm looking forward, I didn't really, I'm glad you came in, because I didn't really realize it had grown that much, the details, so that's good to hear, and, but, I'm just, I'm just looking kind of almost in the audience, and I'm seeing, I'm seeing Gil up there, and Gil, you may not know, but Gil's pitching the Mariner Center as a concert venue for the very next presentation, so, I mean, I'm just thinking, from a conversation here, that maybe, there may be some synergy, and again, I don't know the details, but I'm just thinking, between the Mariner Center maybe doing a paid event... Absolutely. Yeah, during the Coal Shed Festival. So, and I don't know if that's, I'll just bring that up, is a possibility, I don't want to talk about it too much here, because that's something that you'd probably want to talk about, to see if it would work or not work. I would rather see it happen just before or just after. Well, just before or just after, yeah. Rather than divide the crowd, is my... Rather than, yeah, and those are the details, so maybe just, so if it were just after or just before, folks could either come for that event and stay on for the Coal Shed, or, I mean, obviously, there's some, there'd be a lot of logistics to work out, but I just wanted to mention that, put that in people's minds, as a possibility, don't know if it will work or not, or be good or not, so I'll mention that, but, you know, I think that people have mentioned the ferry and things to do, my golly, like, three weekends of something for our visitors from the US to do is really good value for the money, you know? Yeah, so thank you very much. Oh, you're very welcome. Thanks for all the hard work. Happy to do it.
Was there any questions from staff?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question, if it's okay. I think, Phil, you mentioned in your comments, and I could be, correct me if I'm wrong, but about needing help or accepting help, or always looking for types of help in different ways, so my question is, in which ways can the municipality help you and help the festival beyond the obvious monetary way?
Well, we're always looking for hosts, people to act as emcees on stage, that's a big area. You know, the first two or three years, I tried to do it all, I never worked so hard in my life, and I grew up on a farm, but that is hard work, when you're trying to keep things going out front, and running up to the stage to introduce the next act, get background on the guy that's coming up next, all that kind of stuff, you're divided too many ways. So that is one area where we always need help. I like to see just key people within the community, people like yourselves, just being around there, just having a presence, getting to meet the people and talk with the people, and do a little bit of promotion of what this area is all about, you know, that's the kind of thing I like to see. We have certain members, for instance, of Town Council who never miss hardly a day, we have others who I've never seen there, but that's all right, life goes on, you know, but that's, those are the kinds of things that I think we need, certainly, the financial part is major, but, you know, the personnel part is important too.
Phil, just a couple of comments, like I say, this is your 12th year.
Yes.
When you originally started, it was quite a project, and you didn't know where it was going to go, and the first year, not too bad, and then, well, we're going to try a second year, third year, and you're into your 12th year, and so you have to be commended on carrying something through. I guess, in a lot of organizations, and so on, a person will become the organization, Cliffy Gable, Tri-County Flying Club.
Exactly.
Okay, and so on, and you are the Coal Shed, you know, in that respect, no, I mean, if somebody said, "Listen, who runs Coal Shed?", well, Phil DeMill, even if you weren't there any longer, Phil DeMill, I mean, because your name is synonymous with the Coal Shed, and for that, thank you very much. I've been there before, I've always enjoyed it, usually I always make a donation, because I never think of taking something for the food bank, it just doesn't dawn on me, even though it's advertised and so on, but that may be another area that municipality, maybe we can put on our website, the upcoming Coal Shed, and so on, we can help in that area.
Yeah, that kind of thing is great, and again, as I say, the food bank, excuse me for interrupting you, but they kind of run their own show, they have their own volunteers there, and so on, but aside from that, we do the school breakfast program as well.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, that is going through your list here, and you say the different schools and so on, the amount of families that you've helped, I'm not going to disrespect the food bank, it's a very important organization, but, boy, I want to tell you that breakfast program, I never had no idea.
No, and I didn't either.
No.
Till I got involved in this, and the thing about the breakfast program, that I think most of us, and myself certainly included, that we didn't realize, was that it doesn't necessarily apply to kids from poor homes.
That's right.
Very often, some of the kids in that lineup in the morning come from very well-to-do homes, but mom and dad perhaps are too busy, or, you know, whatever. It happens, and we cannot ignore the fact, these kids have to be fair, they cannot be educated if they're not fair.
Some kids are probably going to school because they do get breakfast, and they do get socializing.
I know that to be true.
And it might be the only meal, other than a cookie or something...
Couldn't agree with you more.
At nighttime, and so on, so it's very important. But one of the most important aspects, I think that we have probably don't realize, and I've been out there in the public and so on, a lot of people will, well, Leland, he's with this organization or either that, and as I stated, Phil DeMill is the Coal Shed. What we all miss, the real reality is, that Phil DeMill wouldn't be the Coal Shed unless he had somebody to help him, in that person, so I'll say thank you to you, but Janet, thank you very much for all the times that you've had to be home with supper on the table, and the husband, Phil's not there, and so on, thank you for sticking by him and helping out in that respect, being the secretary treasurer and so on.
On good nights, he even lets me in the house.
Yeah, well, you're fortunate, yeah, there's been a few nights I haven't been welcomed in my own house, but that goes with the territory, and so on, so again, to both of you, thank you very much, and we'll look very favorable...
Thank you very much.
At your request.
Thank you. Look, I tell you, I don't know what strings you pulled there, but finally it got done. Thank you again. Thanks very much. I think Carla might want to see you, Phil, outside, I think Carla wants to see you. 4.4, Mariner Center, Gil Deers, budget capital request and so on, and that's in our package. I also want to let counselors know that after Mr. Deers makes some of the requests and information, that he's also here to answer any other questions we may have pertaining to the Mariner Center and so on, if you have any other questions. The floor is yours, Gil.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I believe the thing on your agenda is the concert proposal, and it's been... I believe the thing on your agenda is the concert proposal, and it's been, that was developed after receiving requests from your council and from councilors at this table and councilors in town regarding the lack, I guess, of concerts that were taking place at the Mariner Center. And so, I wanted to fully explain why concerts have been difficult to obtain. I guess in order to do that, I'd have to go back 20 years, because 20 years ago, when we had the advice from the entertainment industry, they recommended that we have 2,000 seats in the stands, which would allow us to attract an audience somewhere in the vicinity of 3,000, which would allow us to then bid for some pretty significant entertainment. Unfortunately, that didn't take place, and so we're sort of strapped with about 975 seats in the stands and whatever we can put on the floor. So, both the best we've ever done is 2,000, and that was for entertainment or acts such as Charlie Pride and things like that. So, so what's happened over the years is that, you know, originally we were included in a circuit. What would happen is a promoter from, say, New Brunswick or Nova Scotia might find an act out of, you know, somewhere in the States or somewhere out in Western Canada, and say, they promised them 12 venues in a two-week period. And the more popular venues, of course, like Charlemagne, Fredericton, Halifax, Sydney, they booked them first, and then they'd reach out to some of the smaller venues. So, when they came to Yarmouth, they weren't expecting to make a ton of money, but they were satisfying that 12 quota, so we were like part of the quota. So they'd still do okay here, they just wouldn't make a bucket of money, and they would make up for the, for the fact that this wasn't lucrative, because they'd make their money up somewhere else. Over the years, of course, you know, you've seen the Picto County Wellness Center, the LCLC in Bridgewater, the Churro Rec Center, the Air Place, so a number of other venues have come on stream. And those venues are actually in more densely populated areas, so they have a, they can reach a larger audience. So, Yarmouth became a little less desirable, and it's out of the way, so it was a little more travel, a little less income, and so it became less desirable. So then we got to a point where we actually partnered with a couple of, on a couple of occasions with promoters, and the first one or two times we did that, we each walked away with about $8,000 in our pocket, and it was all good. But then the next time we had a concert, the audience wasn't as good, and so the promoter lost about $3,000, and of course, they can't do that. That's, you know, it's not in the business to lose money. So basically, we're down to a point now where the only way we're going to get, we're able to book an act is if we are willing to pay for that act or buy the show. And to buy those shows, of course, you know, requires a financial commitment, and the last couple that we were offered were decades-old country western bands, but the price tag on those was 20,000 US, and that's just to book the band. Then we have to pay for production costs, advertising, rider fees, that sort of thing. So it'll very quickly drive the cost up to about 40,000 Canadian for a band like the Nitty Gritty Dirt Band or, you know, somebody like that. So you're looking at about 40,000, so of course, you do the math on that, and, you know, you've got to sell well over 1,000 tickets just to break even. The other thing that's sort of plagued us is that we thought we were being, getting out in front of this, but we bought folding seating for the, for the audience a few years back, and we had in a coa grant, as part of a major coa expenditure, and we purchased 500 folding chairs. We researched it quite a bit and found that these were the most comfortable and that they were able to be ganged. So we purchased 500. Shortly after that, we got a visit from the fire inspector, the fire marshal, who was acting on a complaint from an audience person, who indicated that we weren't able to supplement our audience seating anymore with our banquet chairs. The banquet chairs are too narrow to be ganged, and it's, it would be labor-intensive to even consider it anyway. So we're really limited right now to about 1,400 seats, about 900, a little over 900 in the stands and about 500 on the floor. So in order to even book a reasonably good band, we'd require more audience seating. So that brings us to the point where we say, well, you know, it's a chicken and egg situation. We can't book a band unless we have the seats, and there's no sense having the seats unless we can book a band. Of course, our mandate doesn't permit us to risk municipal funds, so I can't, I have no budget for concerts, and so the proposal before you is that each of the municipal units offer an assurance of $15,000. I will say that the first part of that money would be spent on chairs, so you're talking about upwards of half of that would have to be expended on chairs, and then the other half would be considered, I guess, insurance against any losses in the event that the concert wasn't a success. Of course, we're not going to take any risks, unnecessary risks, we're going to try and do our very best to make sure that any band we book is something that's going to be popular in the area. We have a huge following, for example, from country, for country western music, seems to be very popular, especially with the Clarean audience in the valley, so we're able to attract from that, from that into the province, that's part of the province. So, what we would hope is that even if we only, you know, netted a few thousand dollars, we could return that money to the fund and keep the concert fund, I guess, viable for the next several years and enable us to continue to bring entertainment to Yarmouth County. Any questions? I will say that the town of Yarmouth and the municipality and the District of Argyle have already approved their portion of this, so you have the last cog.
I, we're having an issue with our system. I can't, no, no, I can't...
There you go.
Okay, there.
Thank you very much, Gil. I appreciate that presentation. I personally had stated before, I had no problem with the capital expense of the chairs, I was just a little curious about why you needed an operating, and you just touched on it very quickly about it is not your mandate to risk municipal funds to go out for things like that, and I didn't realize that until now. I assume that you guys went out and did your thing, whether it be capital and operating, and then put it forward to us in the deficit funding, which of course, you're working very hard to try to limit, and I didn't realize it until you had just mentioned that. So, I would be in favor of supporting your request in that regards. I think it's a good idea. I know there's a lot of bands out there, I know that we possibly missed out on a band that I know that I certainly would have loved to see and didn't have the chance to travel down to Liverpool, been to the Bear Naked Ladies. So, you're absolutely right, some bands like that, you need the seating capacity to make sure that these events are successful and things like that. So I appreciate your candor with that, and I'm looking forward to, after I hear the comments from the other councilors, I'm going to make a recommendation that we move this forward to our next regularly scheduled council meeting to make a decision on it.
Thank you. Counselor Christian?
Yes, well, just to let you know, Gil, that I'm certainly in favor of supporting that motion also, when it comes to him. But I had, looking at your budget revenues and expenses and some capital costs there, and I don't know if you're how aware you are, but our last tri-ministerial council meeting that we had, we had some pretty scary numbers being chucked at us that I hope, I hope most of us were aware that they were, they were numbers, but they didn't be factual in our case. So, in saying that, one of my questions is how can Mariner Center increase revenues? We already mentioned concerts, but there's a lot of time during the summer, perhaps it's not being used, how can, is there, have you guys thought of some other way that we can improve the usage of the Mariner Center?
Actually, if I was to show you our calendar of events through the summer, I think you'd be, you know, rather impressed. Arena one is, arena two maintains ice until about the third week of July, so we still have ice-related events in there. But we're busy most every weekend through April, May, and June, and then July, and then of course, the exhibition, and then the ice is back in. So we don't have a lot of downtime in the summer. What we would like to do is plug the holes where we do have a few days, you know, and I'm just looking, the other day I was approached with a second event that somebody wants to do in the spring, so it'd be sort of along the line of a black tie event or a dinner, an awards dinner. So, we're always out there shopping around, and we're always trying to improve quality of service to our clients, because we know the word gets out. When you talk about ways, you know, one of the, one of the issues that we have, of course, is your spatial requirements. There's a lot of events that we've, we'd like to host, and I guess, without going into too much detail, but, you know, right now, for example, if you want to have a wedding in Yarmouth, the Rod's Grand Hotel, if it's a large wedding, is the only venue available. The problem with our, although we've hosted a wedding in the community room in the back, it was limited to 100 people, and it was tight. It was a nice event, but it was tight. The problem with using one of the arenas is that it conflicts with a lot of the other things that we're doing, so, or it's cost prohibitive. So, there's a lot of events out there, there's flea markets and antique sales and yard sales and, you know, any number of different things, but it's difficult to satisfy the spatial requirements for those things.
Well, this is where, the direction I was kind of going in with the proposed expansion that has been, that you folks have entertained us with, of course, as far as I'm concerned, is the Cadillac version, I'm pretty sure that we might be able to get a, I don't want to leave any dealerships out, Taurus, maybe a version of the complex, right? However, it's saying that we utilize the Mariner Center more if we had the YMCA and if we had the curling rink there. You know, being involved with the hockey side of it for well over 30, 40 years, I've seen, been to different places where when hockey schools come, they like to afterwards go to swimming. So if we had the Y there with a pool, they can go swimming, there's an extra charge, creates more activity for the Mariner Center, creates more activity for the YMCA, and then of course, the teams would like to go for a run before, have a running track, loosen up that way. And then, again, with the curling rink side of it, you already had mentioned that perhaps weddings is one thing, and like some of the, some of my fellow councilors had mentioned that weddings is not going to pay for everything. No, it's not. But again, I try to, you know, I try to explain to people, think of a pie, and take a slice of that pie to make it whole. So weddings would be one, you mentioned flea markets and stuff like that, so, so I can see why the expansion would be, would be very important. Now, on the, if I may, the expense side of it, I noticed that the overall equipment expense is up around $60,000 a year. Is that, some of that or a lot of that is because of the maintenance to the present Zamboni, or is it all?
Well, actually, we were a year behind, the new Zamboni, by the way, arrived yesterday, and the training is taking place today, because it is, has some new technology. We were delayed by about a year in the purchase of Zamboni, that was a board decision, not mine, and this past year it cost us about, I'd say well in excess of $6,000 in maintenance fees on the old one.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, if we'd have traded it in a year ago, we probably could have saved some money, but a lot of that is just the fact that some of our equipment is getting old, and it just requires a little bit more maintenance, that's all.
Yeah.
And of course, prices haven't gone down, you know, we have, we have some suppliers such as Simco that are pretty much, we have to sole source, they're the only ones that can do the job, and they're not cheap.
Now, I see the water and sewer again is $18,000, and I can understand that you definitely use a lot of water out there, but if, correct me, and I'll certainly apologize at this time if I'm wrong, but I believe, a number of years ago, I believe the town had made some type of a deal with some of the fish plants down on Water Street because of the high use of water, that they got some type of a cut rate. That water and sewer figure that you have there, is that part of that type of a contract with the town that you get a discount, or?
No, we pay, likely because of the size of the valve that we have, we pay the top rate for the water and sewer, and your sewage rates in town are based on the water consumption, so that's how it's measured. I did, several years ago, appeal to the town of Yarmouth to provide us with a discount on the sewer rates, and I did that because the biggest consumer, the biggest consumption of water for us, of course, is the Zamboni, we're flooding the ice and we're scraping it, so our water, very little, I'd say very little, but the majority of our water is not disposed up through the sewer system, it's just put outside and melts into the ground. So I made that pitch, but it was unsuccessful.
Wasn't successful. A lot of the interest is something to bring up when we get down to talking more about the expansion part of it. I don't want to hold things up, there's some numbers that jumped out at me here. Oil slash heat of $70,000 a year, then I also see some projects that you get there for, lighting, cost saving, you know, and heat recovery. What kind of, if we went with some of this, especially this heat recovery, would we save quite a bit in a year between the oil and the heat of $70,000?
Well, I can, I can speak to that, that project was, I think, advanced about four years ago, and at the time, our oil prices were in the area of 95 cents a liter. And so the return on the investment for that project, and it was significantly more than it's listed there, some of it had to be done, and at any rate, the cooling tower had to be replaced when it failed. But the return on the investment, I think, for that project at that time was about eight years. However, the cost of fuel took a bit of a nosedive, if you recall, a few years ago, the cost of oil dropped significantly, and I think it bottomed out at one point at 43 cents a liter. We didn't anticipate that it would stay there, and of course, it didn't, we're already paying more than 75 cents a liter, so it's on the rise. Even at today's prices, I would suggest that we would save approximately $50,000 a year on furnace oil if we were to proceed with the heat recovery project. In regards to the lighting, the LED lighting, the cost of all of the fixtures, and that's all of the interior and exterior fixtures in that building, we've got a parts list, and the cost of purchasing all of those fixtures is 75,000. We've already been pre-approved for a $15,000 Efficiency Nova Scotia loan, or a grant, and so the installation would be the next cost. The first quote we got was, we felt high, so we are seeking other possibilities, but I think the return on the investment there would probably be less than four years as well.
So, in other words, what I'm hearing here is that, you know, if we, if we took things seriously and put some of these capital projects in place, and if we go for the expansion of the Mariner Center, we could tie all this together, and we could probably reduce our expenditures by a fair, a fair amount over a number of years, I can see it working. You know, I understand that a lot of arenas and complexes in Nova Scotia do not make a profit, I totally understand, but really, I'm not really concerned about what other places do, I'm more concerned about what we do here and how can we make things better? That's my concern, so. With that, Gil, I don't want to tie, I mean, there's some other questions that have to be answered.
If I could, I would like, I would like to make one comment, and only because you brought it up, and you mentioned the Cadillac price on the, on the expansion project, and some of the numbers that are out there that concern me, for example, is that there was a figure of 6 million that was attached to a new curling club.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, just to be realistic about that, in speaking with the consultant back then, he was basing that on the fact that they were trying to replicate the existing exterior finishes of the Mariner Center, which is not practical and not feasible, I don't believe. I don't even think you could get that, I don't think the company would even be able to do that this day and age. But just by way of comparison, Berwick at the Apple Dome.
Same.
Have just completed a brand-new curling club attached to their arena. It came in at a price tag of $5 billion, so a million dollars in savings, less than, a million dollars than what this one was pegged at. But in addition to that curling club, they have a fitness center, a learning center, they've added two... have a fitness center, a learning center. They've added two hockey dressing rooms and a female dressing room. So, all of those, plus the curling club, amounted to $5 million. So, to consider the $6 million price tag and being realistic, I don't believe it is.
Yeah. Okay. I love that same information. Thank you, Gil.
Councillor Durkey.
I'm three. Let me try it again. There, you're on now.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gil, thank you very much for putting forward this proposal for concerts and a proposition. As you know, I'm fully in favor of this going forward, as I was one of the ones that initiated this. We all know that the arts and culture in Yarmouth is amazing and that people are totally into music here, there, and everywhere. And I think that people would really enjoy a headliner coming to Yarmouth. And I know I certainly would. Not necessarily country, but, so, thank you again for putting together this proposal and seeing where, what we need to do to make this go forward.
Thank you. Go ahead, Trevor.
And just quickly, I too am in favor of it. And I guess the only point of clarification, I think some folks had talked at the, spoken, had spoken at the joint meeting about, you know, the big risks that were involved in this. I don't see those big risks in numbers. You're asking for $45,000, so, and half of that's to purchase chairs. So, you know, essentially, there's very little monetary risk. And in fact, we do, on many other projects, we contribute dollars through grants and those types of things for other organizations to actually bring people in and do economic development. So, I don't, I mean, this is just a little bit different way of doing it. And, you know, if we can make a few dollars and start building up that fund, I think it's all the better to provide those concerts, entertainment, and, you know, some additional room nights for the hotels and that type of thing. So, I'm all for it. It's very, very limited risk and I think the rewards are there. So, thank you for the hard work and let's proceed quickly. Thank you.
Greg, you have anything?
Go ahead, you're-
Thank you. Gil, I was very surprised that the seating capacity at the rink, at the ice part is 900, did you say?
We have approximately 900 and I think 60 seats in the bleachers on the north side. The bleachers in the west end aren't great for concert setting, only because of where our stage is located. So, we have to locate, pretty much locate the stage where you see the big screen on the south wall. So, we can, we can put, we've got 500 seats that we can put on the floor now, folding chairs. We can probably squeeze another 300 or 400 in there to bring the seating up to about 1,800 right now. I know that there's some other venues, you know, if you look at the online seating plan for Queens of AmeriPlace, I mean, they show 1,300 seats on the, more than 1,300 seats on the floor. I would suggest to you that if we were to try that, and our arena is configured in the same way that theirs is, that there'd be people sitting up, and if you know the arena at all, there'd be people sitting up where the Zamboni enters the ice surface. So, you wouldn't have much of a view of the entertainment. We would rather sell quality seating. So, we don't want people coming to a concert and then going home disappointed because they were looking sideways at the stage.
Yeah. That brings me to another comment. I've always thought, I don't know if, how much the electricity costs to put a stage or something like that, but to always have it in the corner of, at the end there, where does that, where the other rink is, in the corner. So, you've got the whole rink to put tables. You know what I'm talking about? I went to a concert at the Metro Centre to see Elton John. I paid over $200 to go see him. And the only way that I could see him was on a big TV in front of me. You know? So, that, at the arena here, it wouldn't be that far at the other end. I don't know if that can be done or not. I don't know. But to have it in a corner, then you've got all the big stands that you could see in the corner. That's just something that I'm thinking of.
Yeah. I think what we, if we ever got to a point where we were attracting entertainment, I guess, you know, bigger name acts than that, not than Elton John, but than we have in the past.
No, no.
You know, if we were to have another Charlie Pride, for example-
Yeah.
-sure, we can change the configuration. What's improved over the years is that we have, we have big screen on the one wall, which we could actually, you know, live, have that on the big screen as well.
Right.
We also have a screen above the two, a 55-inch screen above the two sky boxes in the west end. And we have a TV screen attached to the wall on the west end, as well as one in the lounge. So, for those people that were sitting down that end, they would have that option as well. So, yes, we, you know, we would definitely engage that technology if we were to have, be able to attract a larger name.
Is, there's no, there's no plan for additional seats in the expansion?
I don't believe it's possible with the roof structure, the way it was designed. I don't believe it's possible for you to add any seating in that arena at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Pardon? In a couple of ways, yeah. And that was one.
George, hear my phone, please. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
All right. Thanks very much, Gil. Now, I'm going to get into the meat of my questioning, I guess. In regards to the Mariner Center expansion, where do we move from here? What do you, as the general manager of the Mariner Center, need from the funding partners to move forward with the possible expansion and plans? What do we need, or what do we need from you? Do we need a commitment of possible funding to engage in an architect? Do we need to, there was a lot of stuff brought up at this Tri-County council meeting that we had. And one of the things, as Lauren had alluded to, was what I called scare tactics in the cost of buildings. I really, yes, that's going to be an issue. The capital cost is one thing, the operational cost is another. But we need something in front of us to make a decision. So, what do you need from councils to make, give us the information that we need to make a decision whether we're moving forward or not? Because what we have here is, from what I see, is the municipality is willing, the county of Yarmouth, I don't think are, from what I heard there. What do you need from us?
I'd like to try to answer that question first by saying it's not me that needs it. I was challenged in late 2013, a motion from Town Council to put forward a long-term plan for the Mariner Center. That long-term plan was to take into consideration a number of things, including an aquatic center, a curling club, and I believe maybe even a hotel motel was included in that. But I was, it was a motion by the town of Yarmouth for me to do that. Because of the fact that the curling club and the swimming pool were both mentioned, it was imperative that we begin conversation immediately with the YMCA and the Yarmouth Curling Club because they would be affected. So, that took place in early 2014. And throughout the summer months, we engaged them in conversation. It became apparent that both of those facilities were extremely interested in participating. And from that point on, with the support, financial support from the three municipal units in the province of Nova Scotia, the first step was to put together a needs assessment. The needs assessment, basically, the consultant took into consideration what the recreational and entertainment needs were for the community. And I wanted to point out that he included things such as a field house. Field house was one of the things that was on the agenda. He consulted with a number of sporting organizations and basically came back with the recommendation that that not be included in the project because of the fact that it would cost somewhere in the vicinity, and I'm going by memory, that it would cost somewhere in the vicinity of $2 million. And that he could only find usage for it, an average usage throughout the 52 weeks of the year, about five hours a week. So, he didn't think it was feasible to put a field house. And so, that was one of the things that was sort of removed from the overall project. However, the necessity for the, for a new swimming pool and aquatic center, not only to serve the local community, but also to attract visitors to the area, was one of the things that was mentioned. And although curling clubs are not always typically owned by a municipal unit, we do have examples of that on either side of us. In Barrington, the curling club is municipally owned. And I believe the one in Digby is as well. So, we have, we have examples of municipally-owned facilities. The thing about the curling club, which was attractive to us, and I think I've mentioned it earlier, is that it would satisfy some of the spatial requirements that we have. We have a small community room, which is, you know, will seat about 90, can occupy about 90 people can be accommodated. We have two arenas with ice covers, but depending on what other activities are taking place and the amount of labor that it takes to put the ice covers down and to take out the glass and, you know, raise the nets and do all the things that you need to do to make it presentable for certain activities, it's labor-intensive. So, the curling club component was attractive to the Mariner Center only as an alternate use. We truly want to be a multi-purpose facility. And the fact that we have enough, you know, that we have a full-service kitchen, commercial kitchen, and enough banquet supplies to hold at major events. By way of example, we anticipate in about two weeks' time that on a Thursday night, we're going to be hosting 1,500 fans in Arena One when they watch the seventh and final game as the Mariners win the Can Cup. And we're hoping that that happens. Two nights later, we'll be hosting the hospital gala at the Black Tie event, and there'll be seating 400 people for dinner. So, that's, the multi-purpose component is really, really important. The curling club component of space would allow us to, we could quickly cover an ice surface that size. And we could use that for a lot of other events that we've had to turn away. So, that was one of the attractions of that component. So, now you want to know what do we do. I really don't honestly have the answer. For three and a half years, we completed the needs assessment. Then the next stage was the feasibility study. Once again, three municipal units in the province of Nova Scotia participated. We met last July with representatives from the various councils and with our federal Member of Parliament and our provincial MLA. And at that point, I thought we were moving forward. I thought we were going to develop a fundraising plan. And, because what we're really using right now, what we're basing everything on, is we've got some high-level drawings of a $30 million complex. So, it's a $30 million price tag applied, but those drawings haven't really been, you know, no one's really sat down and gone through them to say, okay, what's the next step here? So, 30 million is a guesstimate. It's probably good, except for I don't believe the 6 million applied to the curling club is realistic. But you might modify that. You know, you might want to say that, because it included the 25-meter pool. It's come to our attention that in order to have any times recorded, so any times that are recorded in a swimming competition now, can only be recorded in a 50-meter pool. There are so few 50-meter pools in Canada that if you were to build a 50-meter pool, you'd be attracting people here for competitions on a regular basis. The only other 50-meter pool in the province of Nova Scotia is at Dalhousie University. So, pardon?
Not yet.
Are they 50 now?
No.
Well, I was, I may be mistaken. I thought there was only one in the province. Yeah, no, I thought there was only one in the province. However, you know, those are the kind of things you might want to consider down the road. You might want to say, well, let's build a 50-meter pool and become, you know, a center of excellence for swimming. Because it would be an extremely, you know, people are looking for that because they want to be, they want the time trials when they're competing. So, you know, those are the things that you might want to look at as the project proceeded. But at this point in time, I think you need the support of, certainly, certainly I believe that the support of the towns of Yarmouth is integral in this because it's within their jurisdiction.
Absolutely, Gil.
Yeah. Not just as a co-owner, but because it falls within their boundaries.
I'm just going to make this comment. If there's one thing that I hear about the most, is people want to see an expansion on the Mariner Center now. Obviously, it's got to come down to the municipality of Yarmouth and the town of Yarmouth, the two full funding partners of that facility have to sit down and hammer this out. It was brought up at the last joint council meeting. It was suggested that we try to hammer this out in six months. But I'll tell you this much. I hear, hear the views of the residents of the municipality and they want this project to move forward, period. If there's anything that's on our bucket list, that's what they would like to see. So, I guess our next step is to sit down with the town at our next joint council meeting, or whether it's a meeting just between the town and municipality and decide where are we moving forward.
Good point. Ooh, you really get to the old, go ahead, Councillor Durkey.
Hi. I actually have two things. One is a light and one's a heavy. I'll do the light first. The light is ZZ Top is going to be playing in Prince Edward Island. Any chance we could get them down here?
We're not there yet, but, you know, but I'll definitely be reaching out. Now, you know, once the, once we have the funding in place and we can place the order and find when the seating's available, I'll be reaching out to some of the promoters. And we've got some, some of them have got access to some pretty good acts, so.
Sounds great. And the heavy one is, and it's not, it's just, it's fundraising. I mean, that's, I think, the biggest thing is with this expansion, is where, how much money, it comes down to, how much money are we going to have to put into it? And I think that's, you know, what, where we need to, what we need to know is where is the money coming from? We need to move forward with, you know, our financial funding people, with the province and with the federal government. In fact, yesterday, the province announced $820 million to be used for recreational facilities in Nova Scotia. So, there's step one, a way for us to get some money for that facility. So, is our next step to sit down with a fundraising plan and say, we expect, you know, so much for you, 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 and when it comes down to what is it that we need? How much money do you want from us? That's what we need.
Our intention last July was to move forward to develop a fundraising plan. And you'd probably require some funding in order to put that together. But the early indications from both the MLA and the MP were that those two levels of government would be in for approximately 1/3 each. So, if you're looking at a $30 million project, you're looking at them, you know, contributing 20 million, which sounds like a pretty hefty price tag. But it doesn't have to be upfront. It's going to take a couple, two or three years for this to, you know, it doesn't have to be something you pay down tomorrow. The YMCA nationally has committed to leading the fundraising campaign and to putting any assets that they have at their disposal in Yarmouth towards it. The curling club, of course, was also going to contribute any assets they could. I think probably the best way to do this, I know back 20, more than 20 years ago, I was involved with Skate Yarmouth. And we pledged on the existing facility to raise a million dollars in the community. We actually raised about 1.2 million, plus we paid for all of the, all of the recognition items within the building. So, that was about another $65,000 or $70,000. So, we actually, you know, we, I think, you know, it's going to take that kind of an effort again. I don't know if there's another Skate Yarmouth organization out there. I'm hopeful. But I know that the YMCA has got a great deal of experience in fundraising. So, I think that they might come up. With a properly executed plan, I think that, you know, there'd be some, that would reduce the municipal cost significantly.
That would be great. I think that's where we need to go, is to just get this fundraising plan going and say, this is, this is what we need and can we do it?
Yeah. And I'm also buoyed by the fact that there is very strong support from the municipality of Aragile, not just from the council, but from the residents. municipality of Argyle, not just from the council, but from the residents. It's kind of, it's kind of odd and quirky that people from outside of town find it, they'll come all the way to town, but all the way down to the golf club, to the curling club. It's like you have to cross a barrier or something, I don't know, but they say the only thing stopping them from curling is that the curling club's where it's at.
Really?
I think that's odd. I know that the YMCA is experiencing, they're stagnant, they're not experiencing any growth, and I don't anticipate that they will experience any growth as long as they're in the situation that they're in. A couple of stories that I'd like to impart, one is in Dawson Creek, British Columbia a number of years ago, the mayor of the community, the community was stagnant, and the mayor put forward a plan to develop a sixty million dollar recreation complex. I think at first, everybody thought he was out of his mind, but eventually, he was able to convince them, and as a result of that project being completed, they now have four brand-new, name, brand-name hotels and other businesses that have been created. And the ironic part of it is, is that with the increased tax base, because they became a center for the entire Peace River and area, and, you know, you've got people from the mines, the logging industry, and the oil industry, all now converging in Dawson Creek as a major center. But with the revenues from the tax base, they were able to complete the mayor's actual dream, which was to have a really nice arts facility, which they do have now, and is named after him. And he's posthumously, he passed on, but the arts facility is named after him. So that's one thing, I think, is that, you know, when you look at the, an expanded recreation facility, you know, you've got a lot of teams that attend, and they bring with them revenues, and they fill hotel rooms. And so, you know, the spin-off, spin-off is amazing. We see it all winter long with teams coming in. The second, though, is in Godrich, Ontario, just recently was in CBC, and Godrich, Ontario was a community very much like Yarmouth County in its demographics, and they were down to five family doctors. And one of the ways that they attracted doctors to the area was to build a brand-new YMCA with an aquatic center and a curling club, and they now have eighteen family doctors. So it was very successful. In speaking to people in the real estate industry here, I'm told that that's probably the first question they get asked when people are moving to the area, what are the recreational facilities like? And that's a very common question, and it's asked almost every time anyone's contemplating moving here.
There's no question that...
A huge interest there.
With, you know, updated great recreation facilities and art, great arts and culture facilities, that that definitely will attract people to your area.
It's a great partnership, that's for sure.
Thanks.
Councillor LeBlanc?
There's something that you mentioned there, and I'd like to clarify. You said at a playoff hockey game or something, that you get up to fifteen hundred people?
We, the last...
That's not seating?
No, standing. No, that's seating and standing. We have fifteen, we have enough seating and standing in the arena for fifteen hundred, but that's about a hundred and twenty-five standing positions.
I thought you only had...
No, we've got nine hundred, over nine hundred on the bleachers on the north side of the building. There's an additional three or four hundred seats on the west end.
How much?
About three hundred and twenty-three, I believe.
Oh, okay.
In the west end, so.
Okay, I thought you only had nine hundred.
And then there's, of course, the skyboxes and standings.
Okay, okay. Yeah. And for the expansion, let's go for it. I really believe that. Thank you.
Councillor Cushing?
My turn again. I agree. I agree with John, where do we go next? And I think one possibility is to have the YMCA come in and explain to us, if they had a new facility, what could they do, what could they experiment, how much growth they were going to have. I know we've heard some statistics, but I like to hear from the white people. Ever since that tri-municipal meeting we had, I've been talking to different aspects of, and one was the YMCA, and the amount of tournaments, swimming tournaments that could be held here, again, would certainly have the economic spin-off, which mainly would be the town. And one thing, and I also had mentioned that the tri, you know, to help recruit doctors coming into this area, I understand there's other things that they come to also, but I can remember when I first became councillor, we met at the Mariners Center in the boardroom, or that room down there, and it was mentioned there was a piece of land that wanted to be sold to build a hotel next to the car dealership, and I really didn't understand it all at that time. I wish I had known now what I, if I had known back then, what I know now. I think I would have had an argument there. What better place to have a hotel is next to your Mariners Center where you're going to draw? And again, the economic spin-off is mainly for, will benefit the town through food, lodging, gas, purchases, shopping, and so on and so on and so on. So I really don't understand why that hotel, that property wasn't sold for a hotel with that water under the bridges, or if we can entertain it again in the north. And the reason why I'm saying that, I was fortunate enough to attend a recreation conference in, I remember too, in Cape Britain, where they had a beautiful hotel with a pitway leading to the main conference center. So all of a sudden, my head started thinking, I'm always, I consider myself a part of a visionary and looking down the road, see how things can happen. And again, I could, all of a sudden, it came to me that, wow, we missed an opportunity, especially if we wanted to do the expansion, so. So I think we're on the right track, but again, with John saying, I believe it's important for us to go, where do we go next? If you could talk to the groups and come up with some idea, we're there to help move this along. Thank you.
Greg, do you have any questions?
I do, if councillors are finished. I did have, I did want to have one fundamental concern or question I wanted to raise. First of all, Gil, thanks a lot for coming in.
You're welcome.
I think it's been really enlightening for council. It's removed some of the trepidation and some of the concerns, and answered some questions that they've had, and we've all had generally about the Mariners Center's operations. I have a fundamental question that's significantly more mundane than the Mariners Center expansion project, but I'm going to take this opportunity to raise it. And I think that when the Mariners Center expands, that's going to require the development of a whole, complete financial package. That's going to involve several components from several different players, so I'm parking that aside for now. My concern is more to do with the every-year, multi-year, ongoing capital needs requirements of the Mariners Center and how they're funded. And I have your, you know, I have your five-year plan here now for capital expenditure planning. And the municipality, you know, we have a lot of challenges now balancing our own operations budgets and our own capital, our own capital-specific projects within our facility here, and directly necessary for us and our jurisdiction and for our residents beyond the scope of the Mariners Center. So my concern is, and I'm raising it, and I don't expect an answer, and in fact, I don't even expect a rebuttal at this point, but I'm just raising it now for consideration. I think, I think that the board and management and the underwriters of the facility need to start getting, sitting down and having a conversation about how we fund the capital investment plan of the Mariners Center going forward. Because it's not sustainable the way it is now for us to continue to try to fund our share out of our, you know, out of our operations and out of the way we fund our operations here. It's just a growing concern for me that I've had for a while, and I'm looking at the plan here now, and it's quite aggressive, certainly at least in the next couple of years. I don't know how much of that is real, but I'm raising it because on a more fundamental, practical level, it's a concern I have in our budget process, and I think we need to find some other ways to match, we need to find some appropriate funding mechanisms to suit your capital investment plans.
I would like to comment, if I could, two things. Number one is that we are always looking for ways to reduce the operating costs, and so some of these, these capital projects that you see are intended for that purpose and that purpose only, as well as greening the facility, making it, you know, more environmentally friendly. So, for example, the lighting component, and the two, I think, that are the highest expenditures on the list, the heat recovery and the lighting component, both of those are designed to reduce the operating costs over time. Actually, no, reduce the operating cost immediately, but pay back over time. The, for example, the new ice resurfacer that we just received, it comes with new technology, and the new technology cost us about twenty-seven thousand dollars to have included on the unit. But our research into that technology indicated that we will see a reduction in the water consumption, we'll see a reduction in the amount of blades that we have to use to scrape the ice. So other facilities that we've, that we've looked at have said that they're experiencing savings of in the vicinity of twenty thousand dollars a year. So we are including that technology because we know down the road, that's going to be a cost-saving to the facility. So we're always exploring ways to reduce the operating budget. In regards to the capital budgeting items, you know, I think back to my days when I was on the Board of Directors, and there was discussion about whether or not we should have deficit funding, or deficit, yeah, deficit funding and sort of like write-off. And I think that if we were to do that, we would probably find that, you know, we could, we could easily see about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we'd, you know, just the wear and tear in the building sort of thing, that, we don't do that. What we do is, we've chosen to do, the board chose to do back then, and I've just followed along that practice, is that when a capital expenditure item comes on the radar, we'll put it forward to the owners.
So you don't fund, you don't, you don't budget for it, and we don't fund amortization, I think is what you're saying?
No. The only thing that you're asked or required to fund is, of course, is the operational funding. The capital funding is just simply a request. And that's the way it's always been done.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But it tends to lead to infrastructure deficits, and then it tends to lead to demands back on us, for example. That's the problem I have. It's great that there's operational savings that we will eventually realize and reduce deficits, presumably, but it's a matching problem of trying to fund it all at once.
Oh, yeah. And no one expects it.
And not the payback is spread out over maybe anywhere up to ten years.
Trust me, I'm a taxpayer too, so I understand that very well. And we don't anticipate, we don't expect everything to be funded, but we were asked to put together a list of the things that we thought were important. So we, you know, we don't, we don't look for, we don't look for anything that we don't think is in the best interest of the community. I will, I would say that I, you know, we're tracking this year, we're hoping that we've, we're hoping that we finish the year that just, we've just completed, that we'll be slightly under budget. I'm not sure how much, but hopefully, we'll be under budget this year, and I think we're looking forward to a pretty good year this year coming forward, so we're hopeful that there won't be any, anything that, no surprises from last year or this year. Pardon?
Thank you, Gil. Thank you very much for your time and the information. I only have a quick question here pertaining to, of the forty-five thousand dollars, you're requesting forty-five from the two councils, and if Argyle's in, that's fine, but it's forty-five. It's not forty-five from the municipality of Yarmouth, forty-five, no. That's the way I understand it, it's...
Actually, it was fifteen from each council, in Argyle and the town of Yarmouth, they've already both approved that amount.
Okay. Now, in that amount of money, was you going to be purchasing chairs, or was you just going to hold that money until you hit a concert and then purchase the chairs? How does that?
As I suggested, it's sort of a chicken and egg thing. We'll order the chairs when we have a reasonable...
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. I've always been one, you know, in business, private business, you have to spend money sometimes in order to make money, and sometimes you have to spend money, and then you, your project doesn't come to premonition, and so on, so you lost. But that's private business, and it's the same here. You're going to have to walk out on the limb and take the chance. Sometimes the limb's going to break, other times it won't. And I don't think this council has any issues with sometimes spending to look forward. If you don't try it, you don't know, in total, so I think that's good. The other thing that wasn't brought up here is our council, at many discussions and so on, has thought of not wanting to change the makeup of the board, but to change maybe a, some of the sitting members in the respect that they've talked quite strongly here, they like to have an elected official sit on the board. Now, originally, though, when it was set up, it was, I'll say mandated or designed and such, that there was no elected officials to sit on the Mariners Management Board because of, you know, they wanted to take that part out. But I think what we want is a little better flow of information coming back. I know Frank Grant sits on there, but we don't get a report from him. We do get reports from you sometimes here on our, to go over your monthly meetings and so on. But I think what we wanted, this council, would like to have a representative, and like to, representative sitting on there, so they report back basically every month, as every one of us does on any committees we sit on, we bring back information to council. So I'm not saying, that has to be, I would imagine it's going to have to be discussed between the town and ourselves and find out how they feel, but I think that might be forthcoming and so on. If there's no further questions, Gil, thank you very much for your time and your effort. Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, business arising from the minutes. Five point one, the Mariners Center concert proposal from the March fourteenth. You folks have already discussed that and so on. Would there was any further discussion needed on that? I think so. Five point two, Lake Mallow waterfront project from the March fourteenth. There was some discussion on that. What's, what is the intent, or what is... Go ahead, Trevor.
Well, I, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am, that staff is going to put a number in the operational budget to begin exploring and penning down what that might look like in terms of conceptually, right, so that we do that work over the next year after the budget's passed. So perhaps we could have our acting CEO comment about that process.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. We're in the process of receiving pricing from our engineers on design and engineering work and looking at several options that might be available there, and that'll be part of our budget package, budget variations.
Can I stop at the washroom? Oh! No! I've got to go to the washroom.
So you got your information that you needed pertaining on the Milo, going forward on that. 5.3, Nova Scotia Community, Nova Scotia Community College McWay Campaign. And that was from our March 14th meeting. Mary Thompson was in, gave us an overview. And that is to do some funding or whatever that they're doing to help students. And I've, I've read, what I've been writing, saying, I read something in the newspaper at Vanguard or something about a person that they helped out needed snow tires or something and he couldn't get to school and so on. So I don't know what the, if council wants to have any discussion on that here or do you want to have discussion and then you go into budget and so on? I don't know. They weren't directly asking us for capital funds or anything. I don't know if it's just something that council wants to look into supporting financially or just let sleeping dogs lie at this time. Go ahead, Deputy.
I think we should just let sleeping dogs lie because they're talking about endowments of $25,000 and $1,000. They're talking about some big money here. And we've only got so many dollars to spend now. If there's maybe a local case in our municipality that I know of, maybe we'd be able to help out. But I, I think it's a great project, but right now we have a lot of other priorities on our list.
Okay, so we just put on a holding pattern. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, councillor.
Mr. Chair, I, and, you know, maybe we could review during the, during the grants. They haven't submitted a grant, but maybe we could think about that during that time, either in that context or in another, and have a little bit more of a conversation around it and, you know, not saying one way or another, but to think about it a little bit more and give it, it's, given the length of the meeting this morning, maybe it's better for us all to go back and reflect on it and bring it to that process. And I'm certainly not disagreeing with Deputy Warden, other than to say I think we just should think about it a little bit more. That's all, at another time.
Fine, then we'll move on to 5.4, UNSM priorities for 2018. You had that in your package and so on. And I think there was a list of 10, 10 priorities and wanted us as council to choose, you know, what we thought were some of the priorities. And I had them, I had written down what I thought, but I have so much, so many different pieces of paper, I can't remember which one I had. But we can run down through them unless you folks had a thing, age-friendly cannabis legalization. Code of Conduct, Economic Development. Five was Housing. Six was Immigration. Seven, Municipal Modernization and Municipal Government Act Revision. Next one, eight, Minimum Planning Standards, Regional Planning. Solid Waste System and Extended Producers Responsibility. And number 10 was Police Services. I don't know what your, you guys' thoughts are. Go ahead, councillor, question?
Yes, a couple of items there that I can see that we should jump on is the cannabis legislation, as we know, the province has made it legal and now come up with their laws and which will tie in with our community action plan very well. So if we can, and I'll speak to that a little bit later, but that would be one subject that we could bring up as an important item. And the second one, of course, is which, again, our council has been proactive on in trying to use the Code of Conduct. Those are the two ones that I, that I jump out at me that I think can be handled fairly, fairly quickly without a lot of controversy to it, I believe. My thoughts.
Anybody else have any? Go ahead, Trevor.
Just below that, they've attached the document I sent in. So if, and so the ones, I too, like Lauren, I'd listed that is, so I'd copied the document and then to the right column, if you look at the right column, I prioritized it by, so the document on the left-hand sort of column, there's one, as you indicated, they're presented there in no particular order. Can, everybody got that document?
Yeah, go to the first one, go into, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's, is a presentation of them, but that's a no-order priority on the left-hand column. What I did, you'll see, you'll see, I put two by cannabis legislation. So I thought that was the second most important. I mean, that's debatable. I thought the most important one was Municipal Modernization and Municipal Government Act Revision, just because we've spent so much time talking about that at the council table. It kind of gets into that whole memorandum of understanding piece. So I think that, that is one. Two is, I agree with Lauren, certain that's high up, the cannabis legislation. And I gave the reasons, wrote in the reasons for that. Number three was Economic Development. Number four was Immigration for the reasons I've outlined. And number five was Municipal Planning Standards, Regional Planning. And again, that's kind of was linked to the modernization. So I said Regional Planning is a critical piece of the move forward and must be closely linked with modernization one. So what I'm going to propose is, my understanding from the last meeting was we were going to sort of score them and then, but, so if folks want to use that as a template, I've put that in there and are there some, can we agree on, because we're going to have to send this off. So if we can, I mean, I'm willing to sort of change this or have staff change it to reflect all the council's wish, but is there anything there, just if you could quick the review that's sort of out of sorts or that people couldn't?
What is your wishes? I don't all speak at once. You guys all got worried on Gil? What?
Flashing.
Huh?
I'm flashing.
Go ahead, councillor.
I would agree with the priorities that Trevor has set.
Councillor, question?
I would, I think Trevor did his homework on this and I appreciate his work. I would go along with it. I think the Code of Conduct one is important, but I think it's something that we're working on anyway, so. So I agree with Trevor.
Everybody else is fine with that? Please, Trevor.
Good job. Thank you, Trevor.
Good job. Keep up the good work. Yep, yep. Okay, I gotta get out of here. Second, nice. Okay, we're moving into item number six, business. 6.1, Lake Estates Court Paving, 6.1.1 EXP Proposal. I have to apologize, I have not opened that.
I'll just comment quickly on that one. It's similar to the Milo one. We engaged consulting engineers to draft up a price estimate for the design and engineering work required to do that project. And that'll come forward too with our budget deliberations.
Okay. 6.2, email from Nova Scotia Fracking Resources and Action Coalition pertaining to hydraulic frac, fracturing, frac, yeah. What is, what is the thoughts of this municipal council on that and if you would like to respond to that? I know as myself, I am not in favor of any fracking and so on. I realize there is, there's been a lot of talk and so on. And I'm not a big proponent of fracking, but... Go ahead, Trevor.
So the, the letter says, Dear CEO or Town Clerk, and it's been brought to council, but my understanding is that it's just for our information and there's no request to respond. So I think we just take it as information and move on.
Wasn't there a request, maybe I've read so many different things, I thought. I think, I think they are, I think they are asking for some specific...
Oh, yes, they are. Sorry, my apologies. I see that. I stand corrected.
So but, I mean, I, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. How come, oh, Trevor, you gotta turn your...
Oh, sorry, yeah.
And Lauren, I'm going to bounce by you because councillor Durkey had hers on first.
No problem.
But, see, I can't. You gotta shut yours off, Lauren?
Oh, it's on.
Yeah, see, I don't know what, it never used to be that way. Go ahead, Patty.
Thank you. It says, "In the coming weeks, our municipal council may be asked to consider a motion calling for the province to remove the ban on hydraulic fracturing. I would not be in favor of removing that ban."
And that would be, so are you suggesting that our council, I'm not asking for a motion, but are you suggesting that this council send a letter of support of not lifting the moratorium?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's fine, that's what I, go ahead, councillor, question?
I can understand some of the fears that the fracking has on people because all the scary, again, all the scary stories that have come out of past years of this, this type of extraction of fuel from the, from the ground. However, I personally know that the technology has improved tremendously a lot over the, over the years. And it would certainly be an economic boom for our province to be, allow this to happen. So I certainly would be in favor of it. Although I don't live in any of the counties where the fracking will happen, but just from an outsider looking in and looking back at, from when it first started and where it is now with the technology there now, I think it's a much more viable way to extract the resources from the ground.
Go ahead, Trevor.
I think the issue is whether, whether you're sort of individually for or not for fracking, depending on the amount of research you've done around it. I don't think this is an issue for us to get involved in because as Lauren points out, our geology is, is, my understanding is our geology here in Yarmouth County is not such that we have that resource. And I don't think for us to get involved in, you know, directing other jurisdictions, other municipalities in the province of Nova Scotia, I don't, I don't feel qualified to weigh in on this. It's not something that is municipal councillor is coming, that I'm aware is coming to Yarmouth County or anywhere near Yarmouth County. So I think it's for those municipalities that have the resource in the province to, in residents to discuss. So I encourage no further action on behalf of our council on those, on that basis. So, I mean, whether I'm personally for or I think residents are personally for, I would say that because I'm not aware of any pending fracking or anything that's going to go on here in Yarmouth County, I don't think it's an issue for us to get involved in. That would be my comment.
No other comment? Just to let you have an understanding, Geisborough was where the offshore gas and so on was coming ashore. And they're looking at, they, Geisborough was looking at a $3 million a year reduction in revenue from that industry because it's turned down. So do they want fracking? They're, they're very polite in the way they're going about it, but that's what they're going to want. Colchester is also nearby and Colchester was a big proponent the last time and they supported the ban on fracking. And I'm not sure where my fellow councillors in that area, what they're going to be doing coming forward, eh? Because they're stating that there's, is it 60 billion, $60 billion worth of revenue and so on in the, in the gas on land and so on? I, excuse me, between 40 and 60 billion dollars. And so they're calling that it's a big windfall for Nova Scotia. But me personally, I'm not for fracking unless they've made some real major changes in better development and so on. I've watched a lot of documentaries down in the States where land has become completely invaluable, it has no value any longer and so on. So I'm not sure that's the route we want to go, or me, that that's a route that I would be supporting of lifting the moratorium. At this time, you had one councillor that's kind of looking at supporting the, not lifting the moratorium and you have another councillor wishes not to participate at this time. So the floor is opening again, Trevor.
So I, I think the way around this is a good conversation, but if somebody wants to bring a motion, either to, and I mean, it's, it's, it wouldn't be a motion to, like, I mean, I, it wouldn't be a motion not to do anything. You have to make a motion to do something. So if somebody feels strongly that the municipality wants to send a letter off, you know, at next regularly scheduled council meeting, make a motion, have a secuder to discuss it, like sending a letter in support of, of, you know, a moratorium. But what I'll say is, is an independent, is just one of seven, we'd have a vote and we'd, I guess if it had four votes for, it would carry and I'm fine by that. But what I would say is if somebody were to bring that, for the reasons I've stated, not that I'm for or against fracking, I'm just saying that as municipal councillor here in the municipality of Yarmouth, I don't feel it's necessarily our business to be telling other jurisdictions what they can, I mean, I wouldn't like it if... it if somebody, uh, that's not, doesn't have much to do with the fishery in southwest Nova Scotia, if somebody up in Picto County started, uh, you know, making motions to, to do A, B, or C in our fishery or in our, in our woodlands or, you know, what are the case, something that really only means something else. So for those reasons alone, I, I wouldn't vote in favor of, of, of sending off a letter of support. I think it's a provincial, federal issue to be dealt with, with those municipalities independently, so that was my comment.
Go ahead, councillor Durkey.
I just want, want to reiterate that it says, "We may be asked to consider a motion on the letter," so I think we don't, at this point, I don't think we really need to do anything, but.
Good point, good point. Just keep it on, on the radar because there'll be more information, uh, coming forward. So, go ahead councillor Cushing.
Yeah. I, I, I made my view, I say, I'm only one person, but I do agree with Trevor 100%. And I had mentioned it myself, that we don't live in any of them counties that are being affected, so we should not, uh, I don't think we should, uh, be, uh, either way expressing, um, an opinion from our, from this council to support or not to support that. You know, I've done, I know, I've seen some of the same, same documentaries that you talked about down the state, but that was in years ago. But like I say, the technology has improved, uh, a hundredfold since that time and, uh, but again, I don't think we should, uh, be supporting something that's not in our municipality to affect our county.
Okay. Nothing, that's where we're gonna stand right at this moment. Okay, 6.3, noise bylaw. Councillor LeBlanc, you have the floor?
It's, uh, I had a call about a concert that happens every year on the Moots Mill Road or, uh, what's the name of that road now? It's not the Moots Mill Road, it's.
Somerville?
Somerville, yeah. Somerville Road, but anyways, we all know it by, uh, Moots Mill Road. And Andrew Hatfield, he's had, uh, concerts there for the last three or four years. And something must've happened last year that he, uh, I was contacted to see if there was something that I could do or that we could do for him to have this concert. Apparently every year he's been going to the houses and tell them that he's having, it's a, it's a, in memory of a friend that passed. And, uh, they're having this concert, started little, small, and now it's come up to about 500 people. They have, uh, quite a few bands that are playing. And, uh, apparently, uh, they were, even though he went to see the neighbors and had told them what was happening and everybody seemed to be okay. It affects Ellenwood Park campers also. So apparently there was a lot of complaints last year. The cops went there, the RCMP's went there and, but they're short-staffed and there was too many people to do, they, they couldn't control it, they had, there were too many people. So, uh, I was told that this was, uh, not gonna be, uh, approved, that they could have. I can understand, but there's only one thing that bothers me. Patty mentioned ZZ Top. If they came here and they wanted to have a concert outside, it would be approved in two seconds because of the revenue. Money talks, in other words. And I don't think that is fair. Thank you.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This, if I'm not mistaken, is the Rock the Doc concert that they have. I, I too have, have received, uh, concerns both for and against. The biggest concern that I heard last year was, it was 5:00 in the morning and the last band was going on the stage. So the problems stem from, this not only turned into a afternoon-evening event, it also turned into an all-night-long and all-morning-long event. So you can understand where, where some people were absolutely frustrated. I, I hate to make a bylaw for one event that, that happens like this. I don't know, maybe if, if we municipal council could ask the event holder to, uh, possibly do something, but I think we need a little bit more information on it. Because it is in memory of a friend, uh, there are a lot of bands that play, but it's, it's a good thing that the event is grown, but it's overgrown where it's being held. And that's where I see the problem is. I, I don't really know where to go in this. I don't think the, the long arm of the law, AKA the municipal council, should be saying that you can or can't have this event. Uh, from my understanding, the police tried to go there, but there was no, currently no municipal bylaw in regards to noise. I don't know. I, I think maybe a simple policy. Could, could be done, a permit, I don't know. Now, the permit could be for a nominal fee of $5 that you're holding the event, unless you have a permit that that event can't be held. And on that permit, there may be a, a term that it has to be shut down at X time in the morning. I don't know where this would go. I, I do, I'm certainly glad councillor LeBlanc that you brought this up. Uh, that's something that I think should be discussed in our policy and bylaw committee rather than hammering it all out here today. That's just my view.
Councillor Allen?
Yes, I don't normally say much, I know. I'm all for a good party. I have no problem with that. I know people that attend the event and they have a great time. I live next to a campground that holds concerts once in a while. And, um, I, I could be wrong, but we might have a noise bylaw. I, I think we do and it's to a certain hour. I had friends that were at Ellenwood last year when this took place and they actually gave them earplugs and told them they would give them a refund on their money the weekend of that party. I just think, a party that goes all night when the bands are going on at 5:00 in the morning, it's, it's, that's beyond. That's, you know, I, I, I get what he wants to do and so maybe something's gotta be done with him. Maybe he could spread it out for a couple days and have it till, you know, whatever our bylaw is. I, I, I'm sure it can be explained to him. I just, I, I know if I was living next to him. That's, that's a little long.
Councillor Cushing and councillor Durkey, or LeBlanc? Go ahead.
Thank you. Number one, I wasn't gonna say too much, I still won't, but I, I tell you right now, if ZZ Top was coming to Yarmouth for, for, for a concert, I'd buy the first ticket. Number one. Number two, if ZZ Top did come to Yarmouth, there'd be a, a place where they would, uh, do their, do their concert and it only lasts two or three hours, four hours, five hours tops, maybe. Because they had other bands there too. But to go all night long in one area, again, I gotta agree, it's, it's not. It's not, it's not a good thing.
Cal?
No, I, I misspoke. I'm, I'm sorry I did because, uh, I didn't realize that it went all night. I, I thought that they, from the conversation that I had with him, he never mentioned that. It was, the thing, you know, it could only go to 11:00 and I thought that that's when it stopped. But in saying that, I, I, if, if there is a bylaw that he can go till 11:00, uh, can we think about that? Can we talk about that?
Well, you. Go ahead, Trevor.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, I think, uh, the deputy warden's suggestion was good that maybe it go to bylaw and policy and maybe just now that we had a conversation, flushed out a few of the details and what, I mean, we only know kind of what it's all about. Uh, the, the positive thing is that 500 people-ish are out there enjoying themselves. I think, but again, if we've got some, um, complainants out there, that their needs, their, their complaints need to be taken seriously too. So I mean, I think it's a matter of, of maybe, uh, staff looking at the issue, um, maybe even contacting Mr. Hatfield to get a little bit more information about, about what the event's like and that type of thing. And, and looking at, you know, our bylaws and, and, uh, policies and so forth and, and, you know, maybe we can have a little bit more, I guess, fulsome conversation. We got a few more of the facts because I, I, I wouldn't wanna have too much of a conversation without having all, all the facts and, and maybe we can help a little bit to, to, to both make the concert a continued success while at the same time honoring residents' uh, kind of right to, uh, to, you know, not, not be, uh, be interfered with sort of in the wee early, wee, wee hours in the morning, that type of thing. So just kinda making, uh, making it, making it continue and, or allowing it to continue in a, in a, in a positive way, which it is. And, uh, while at the same time mitigating some of those risks around noise and all those other types of things, so. I, I, I think we should probably, you know, leave it there and maybe, maybe our deputy CAO can make a few comments, given what, what he's heard so far as to how he might move forward. But I, I think, I think policy and bylaw is a good place to, to begin.
Do you have any comments?
Certainly I would comment. Certainly I should comment or would, I've been waiting to comment until everyone else has provided their comments. So we have, we do have a noise bylaw in play, um, but there are some practical issues with, with the bylaw and with the whole situation. The way, the way the bylaw reads now, it does not appear to me that there's even a mechanism in the bylaw to, to grant a permit with conditions for the hours of 7:00 PM until 7:00 AM the next morning. So that's a real problem. And to try to even enforce the bylaw, bylaw, quite frankly, is very impractical, difficult to do. So the development officer for the municipality has been in discussions with a proponent and he's also has been or is going to be in further discussions with our solicitor when he returns from his vacation next week. So I'm not aware of the details of those conversations, but I know that he's, he's aware of the situation and he's looking at how to address it. His recommendation at this time would be to not to let it proceed, um, but that's not necessarily the recommendation you wanna follow for a variety of reasons that you've brought forward. The practical problem that I see is amending a bylaw and getting it through the process of readings and approvals in time to meet, uh, this proponent's proposed concert date, which I'm not familiar with, but I suspect it's coming up soon, early in midsummer. So it causes a real practical problem from, from a bylaw amendment situation. So that's where it stands right now. You have options, you can, and all the options, of course, have consequences. You can ignore, uh, you can ignore the situation and, and deal with complaints. You can amend the bylaw to allow a permitting process, but number one, that's probably not gonna meet the timelines required for his concert and number two, you'll probably still have complaints, but at least you'll have, at least you'll have authority under a bylaw to grant a permit with conditions. You know, you could also continue to try to work with the proponent to try to find a way that's workable for all, uh, so that he can have his, have his event and for those that wanna join and try to respect some of the neighbors to some degree with some, with some rules around it. Now, I don't know what form of agreement that would take, without a bylaw in place to back it up, but, but maybe that could involve some more discussions with solicitor. So that's kind of the situation with that right now. We have a bylaw that doesn't address, doesn't provide us the ability to even permit.
You can't enforce it.
And it's very, very difficult to enforce. And quite frankly, the decibel levels are very, very low. I mean, and this is the other concern I have, we might be setting a precedent to some degree by shutting this down because I'm sure that the decibel level, according to the bylaw, is broken on a regular basis all summer long, all throughout the municipality.
I, I believe, personally, I, I believe what Greg is stating here is probably the best route, route to go. You know, bring the proponent in, have him sit down with, with Roger and, and maybe even with Greg and have a discussion and tell him, you know, that there is some concerns coming forward and if some of the issues aren't ratified and so on, that council is looking at redoing noise bylaw and restrictions that could come into that noise bylaw because he won't, he doesn't comply a little bit and be considerate of neighbors and so on, that all of a sudden his, uh, these kind of event venues will be toned down a whole lot. Uh, I, I think that would be the proper way at this time and that this moves to policy and bylaw to work on. Because this was discussed 22 years ago. I know all about it. We had a sound decibel reader, we went and stood outside of, well, at that time, SkyTAC. We went out and stood there in the middle of the night and they cranked up their big stereos inside and we done all, and then it fell back that our, the RCMP could be called to go, but they cannot enforce a municipal bylaw. Okay? The only way you can do this is you'd have to call your, your, uh, bylaw enforcement officer and he'd have to go out there and he'd have to stand so far from where the noise is with this noise, uh, decibel reader that we'd have to purchase and, okay, yes, it's over the 10 decibels or whatever we sat.
He has to stand within 100 feet of the noise source.
On and on and on it went, so it was just, no, like, no, we didn't go that route. Anyway, go ahead councillor Allen.
Um, this might be an odd question, but what exactly is he looking for? Is he looking for a reason to argue with the neighbors when they call the Mounties because they've had enough? Like, is, is, like, I guess this just kinda came to me, I guess. He's not so much looking for a bypass on, he just doesn't want the, he, he, he wants a reason for the neighbors not to be able to call the Mounties is what I am assuming. So I, I, at that point, I, I don't think it's anything that we should be involved in as far as, he's, he's essentially holding a party and he's asking for us to find a way for him not to get in trouble for it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, I think we're getting involved in something here I, I don't believe we should be involved in.
Okay, usually you get the complaints from the neighbors. He's coming in and making, uh, a request.
So that they can't, he wants a way around.
He wants to be able to make as much noise as late as he wants. And he wants us to say, yeah, yeah, it's fine. And I don't think that's right for the neighbors, Ellenwood Park and everybody else around. And I, I just think he's coming in and bringing down, you know, and you have to be shut down by, by 3:00 or whatever and your noise, you know, you're gonna have to. I think, you know, and with Greg and, and Roger having that discussion with him and in the interim, we start working on, on this bylaw and tell him, you know, I mean, if, if he can't, doesn't cooperate, that things may change enough that next year he's gonna be shut down at 11:00 if that's what the policy and bylaw comes up with, you know, just on, on a, on a pretense to move forward. Let's try and work with him so that everything, everybody's happy this year. And I think, like you say, with, with Greg and, and Roger having that discussion, the worst he can say, no, I'm gonna make all the noise I want, go for it, we can't stop ya, but your neighbors are gonna be in at municipal council complaining that the noise level is too high, we want something done about it. I guess it's Trevor first. Yeah, just, just, just quit, oh. Oh, I'm sorry. I got, okay, Patty?
Not sure who it is.
Patty?
Okay, thank you. It's a once, once-a-year thing to start with, number one. Number two, people have parties with 30 people and make lots of noise. And, and, and again, I think we're opening up a huge can of worms by us being involved in, in it. I mean, I do understand the perspective of the constituents that it's noisy and they don't wanna deal with it, but it happens everywhere. So if you start putting restrictions on it, again, how the heck are you going to, to, to maintain that bylaw? How are you gonna police it? I don't know. I mean, if, if people are doing things illegally, uh, on the site in terms of the RCMP going, like underage drinking or whatever, well, that's different.
Go ahead, Trevor.
I, I think councillor Allen brought up a, a good point. I'll just add that, that I, I think that, you know, may, maybe staff, as they've suggested, could, could, 'cause there's been some work already done that we don't know about, could, could have a talk with, uh, Mr. Hatfield and so forth, chat with him. I, I, I'm not for making, um, any decisions here. Subsequently, they could come to policy and bylaw. At that point, we, we may choose. At that point, we may choose to either introduce additional policy bylaw or not. It may not be feasible to do any of those things, either to make these events easier or to provide a framework or to quiet things down or to do any of these things. So I haven't thought about it adequately. I mean, it's just come to the floor to really make, to have any real, you know, substantial conversation or form any opinion around this. So I think that it's always about process and I think so that staff, I think at first should come to staff. They should get their head around a little bit more. Then if they choose, if they see, they can bring it to policy and bylaw as an item. We can talk about it a little bit and say, do we want to go down that road at all? Is it somebody else's jurisdiction? Do we have the means to have a bylaw enforcement agent, one of them, a person from staff out somewhere, wherever in the municipality here or elsewhere at 3:00 in the night? I mean, do we send five people out at 3:00? So again, it's about, you know, we do, how we want to approach this. So I think staff needs to, you know, have those conversations, maybe settle things as best they can through that means and then come to us if there's, you know, if they believe there's, you know, policy or bylaw would be helpful, additional or amendments to policy and bylaw. So I guess those are my comments. I think there's a process. I don't think talking about it here, I don't know that much about it. I don't have the facts. I don't like talking about things that I don't know factually. I mean, there's no presentation. We're just talking about things that may or may not have happened, right? So I think it's time to go through that process and those are my comments.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Yeah, just, I must apologize again because I spoke too soon of what I said. But in saying that, we, right now, it seems to me that we have a person in authority that's going about it and he's going to take care of it. He's going to tell them, no, you can't have it and, you know, and that's it. Whether he won't, this is my understanding, that he's not going to approve it and he's in contact with this guy?
He's had discussions, I believe, with the proponent or the proponent's father to talk about some of the issues that arose last year. I wasn't involved in the discussions. I wasn't brought into them, so I don't know how they went. And I know he's reviewing it with legal when he returns.
Yeah, oh, he's on vacation?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we really, we're in a difficult situation because the bylaw doesn't address things very well. It seems like most people want to see the event happen. So I'd say the best room, the best ground is to find a way in the middle to try to help him and accommodate him, but he's going to come and work with us to try to satisfy some of the, some of the issues that have arisen because of the neighbors and the Ellenwood guests and try to meet a compromise. I would say that the, I know you don't want to be involved in it and I don't blame you, but it's, you're going to get the complaints regardless of if you have any jurisdiction or not.
Either or against.
The noise bylaw, if it's properly crafted, at least gives you some leverage to work with and the ability to put some rules around some of these events to give you a little bit of control so it's not out of hand and out of control. And you can say, look, we've considered this, we've established these rules to try to balance, you know, the interests of everyone involved and this is where we're at. Right now, we're kind of in no man's land a little bit.
It gives the person who is going to be holding the event some parameters and so on. Parameters are made to be broken, that's why they're there, but if there is some parameters, then they'll try and adhere to some of them. But if there is no parameters, hey, let's make it a seven-day thing, 24 hours a day and, well, you got other issues that come up. So I think that's, I think that's the best way to go about looking at it at this time. I really do. Okay, we'll move on. Oh, community action plan cannabis. The smoker in the group, Counselor Cushing, go ahead.
As you're aware, this was, the community action plan was brought forward to council to be introduced into the PAC committee. In our last council meeting, after discussion with fellow councilors and whatnot, it was decided that the best place for this community action plan would be to introduce it to the bylaws committee. So in saying that, as we all are aware, that the province has introduced the laws that reference cannabis legislation. So in saying this, I've contacted, made contact with Larry Phillips on our committee who had drafted the community action plan. And as you're aware, that he presented it to our council. Him and I introduced it to the town council. Him and I introduced it to the Argyle council. And pretty much everybody was in favor that it was a good ground base to start with. So what I've asked Larry to do is to take the sections of the laws that the province has now and interject them into our community action plan. And in saying that, I'd like to be able to make a motion on the April 28 meeting that we introduce this community action plan with some new information from the province that be inserted into the plan. I'd like to make a motion on the April 28 to have this plan being introduced to the bylaws committee. So I just want to update everybody on that and if there's any questions, I will try to address them.
Is there any question to Counselor Cushing at this time? Everybody's happy with the smoking and the edibles and so on, I guess? Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. I apologize. Anyway, I guess then we'll move on then. 6.6, regional collaboration. I have to, I don't know how far you folks got into this at your last joint council meeting because at our last council meeting, we didn't get a chance to discuss where we wanted to go with it and so on. So I don't know what discussion you wish to have here this morning and so on. I know that Greg had brought forward some comments and so on, and we never had a chance to deal into those. So this is on here for right now. So what is the wishes of council? Go ahead, deputy.
Well, as written, I'm certainly not in favor of some of these aspects of this memorandum of understanding. My, what I envision in a memorandum of understanding is the three municipal units agree to move forward with multimillion-dollar projects, not things like dog parks and improvements at the lighthouse and stuff like that. I think those can be done locally within the municipality. We should, as an MOU, should be focusing on multimillion-dollar projects like Mariner Center expansion, airport, ferry terminal, which we have already agreed to. On top of that, also looking into moving forward with some shared services. Some of these things that they have on here, it's just way too broad, in my opinion. Strategic, I'm just going to read this off of some of the priority actions. Strategic regional direction and priorities. Develop a strategic regional direction statement that articulates opportunities and priorities, maximizing economy and economic and community development. I think that's wrong. I think we should all have our own identities. Land use planning and infrastructure, there's one there that really bothers me. So are we going to get together as three municipal units and start saying, well, we want you to change your land use bylaws because currently you don't allow a cement or a concrete factory in the municipality district of Yarmouth in the wellness protection area set? So what does that come down to, that we're all going to agree that what can be allowed and what cannot be allowed in certain parts of the municipality and/or Argyle and/or the town? Are we going to go that far? I personally am very uncomfortable with that part. Let's move on a little bit further. Transportation is another one. Consideration of a transportation authority to manage all regional transportation infrastructure. As I said, I see a lot of holes in this. I could go on and on and on. I think a regional municipal agreement should only be, in my opinion, multimillion-dollar regional projects, AKA the Mariner Center, the airport, maybe art center. I don't know where we're going with that, but that is a regional thing. And we should also continue looking at some shared services, like land plants, sharing land planning services, not sharing actual land planning, but just the planning services because as we all know, Brad Fulton's retiring here soon in our planning department down in the municipality of Argyle. We're currently working on reworking that whole project. I don't know what's in the works there, but that's just my own opinion. I just think that this year agreement, as written in the draft, is way overreaching.
Counselor Cushing.
I can appreciate the first draft of the memorandum of understanding, excuse my language here, or my stuttering. But however, I have to agree with John, it's asking too much. Although we are within the Yarmouth County, there's interests in the municipality of Argyle that really don't affect the interests of the municipality of Yarmouth or the town of Yarmouth. And the same thing is the town of Yarmouth may have some interest that the municipality of Yarmouth and the municipality of Argyle don't interest. So this is where we got to be, we got to be very careful. We want to keep our own identity for sure and try to work in our separate councils in our areas to try to improve our own district, our own areas, and then also work cooperatively with all three when it comes to a Yarmouth County project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that we need to look at municipal modernization and the direction the province wants us to go before we can agree or disagree on this memorandum of understanding. I think there's some direction coming from the province that we have to understand and maybe we would benefit from having someone speak to us, come down and speak to us that the three municipalities of that, where they want to go with that direction, to get a better understanding. Because I think some of that has to do with, I haven't had a workshop on it, maybe some of you have attended one, but I do believe that they're looking at some regional planning strategies.
Was there any other comment from any?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I don't see, right.
Generally speaking, again, the people have brought up, the details still have to be thought out with our solicitor. Maybe we could have a meeting with our solicitor and talk about some of the legal aspects. But at our regional council meeting, we did talk about, there is some, the issue of what's local and what's regional or what's, I guess, what's to be dealt with by each council individually and regionally. Everybody had a different opinion and that's not surprising because everybody defines regional as different for various reasons. It's a complicated mix of services and sort of infrastructure and that type of thing. Having said that, I'm generally in favor of municipal modernization. I don't think, having tended, like Federation of Canadian Municipalities, having had conversations at a very high level, my belief is that we're too small, each of our units, to effectively lobby for those, you know, projects that we need. The busing issue, so for instance, because we're three municipalities, there's a whole bunch of regulation that won't allow buses to cross borders and these types of things. So those are things that I think we need to iron out over time, but iron out together. And again, the MOU for regional collaboration, identify key regional issues that impede efficient consistent service delivery. So the MOU is not tying our hands, saying, you've got to do this. The MOU is simply saying that, to my understanding, is we should get together as two or three councils, three councils in this case, and talk about what we can work on collaboratively. Also, I don't disagree with aligning our policy development a little bit better. Just the noise bylaw we just talked about, well, we share borders with both Argyle and Yarmouth. So if somebody's playing loud music in Argyle and Yarmouth and it's bothering our residents, it'd be nice to have a shared bylaw, right? Both to give folks, and maybe it's a bylaw that says in town, one thing happens and the municipalities, something else happens. I don't know. But all I'm saying is, I think in principle, we're going to have to go down this road because I think we're stronger together than we are apart. I don't disagree with Counselor Cunningham or Deputy Warden Cunningham in the sense that, yes, some of those things are going to be clearly, I mean, I'm not looking at taking over roads in the town of Yarmouth, right? They do their own roads. The province of Nova Scotia does most of our roads. We only have the two subdivision roads that we actually own. I'm fine with that. But having said that, those are things that, you know, this agreement doesn't say that we're going to be involved with. It's simply a matter of saying, it's just a memorandum of understanding. We want to move toward maybe more shared services and we'd all have to agree on that. But I think generally, it's a positive thing. The Mariner Center wouldn't be there without, you know, an agreement among the municipal partners, this is saying, let's do more of those things that are good. So I'm generally in favor of it, but I think, again, let's have a deeper conversation, maybe a working session around this with legal counsel and staff to say, what is it we like about this? We talked about a few of these things. I think it's going to be updated from our last regional council. I mean, I'm not certain if the updates are in here. I don't think they are. No, they're not. So let's get that updated document and talk about it more. But I think, generally speaking, we should move forward with something while offering the protections to, I mean, I don't want to give up immediately or cede all of our ability to make decisions under our municipality. I don't think that's where we're headed with this. And so having the conversation, so I think we should take all that's good and move forward and maybe some of the things we have some concerns about, talk about and remove if they need to be removed.
Okay. Is there anything further? I only have, I guess, a quick comment. Like you say, I wasn't at your last meeting, but if I'm not mistaken, and I can't, it's somewhere in my files. Greg, you had made quite a, you had sent us off an email with a lot of questions and so on, and we've never sat down and had that discussion. We were going to, and I think that we should be doing that first. I kind of thought that we were working pretty decent. I do have some concerns. I don't want to be, well, I'm not going to say what I'm thinking, I guess, in that respect. I think what Greg, you spent some time after the original meeting of our joint council and to prepare something over the weekend and gave it to us, and then we were going to try to move forward on that, but we haven't. And I think what I'll do is ask Greg if he can find that again and then resend it and so on to us. And we can go from there and possibly before the end of the month, we could sit down and we have a look at that and have that discussion with Greg, sit down and have a meeting, if we have to call it a special one, whatever, and just go over that and so on. What is your thoughts and so on? Or Greg, what's your?
I'll certainly do that. And all that was, again, was to provoke some thought amongst you people. And I do think you should take a step to go to have, just have a working session here just to discuss that whole idea, the whole notion, and maybe some of the questions will give you some direction, some ways to think. My greater concern is that this is a document that's going to negotiate, be essentially negotiating document between three parties. And I can't possibly see why you're trying to do that in a public forum. It makes no sense to me at all, whether it's this forum or the joint councils. I think it's very, it's not fair to anybody and it's quite impractical and it's unworkable. So I think we need to consider a different forum to even have the negotiation. So I think, I think we need to consider a different forum to even have the negotiation or discussion with the other potential partners. But as a first step, it would be good for this council to sit down and just have a working session and, and try to bring us all closer together and be on the same page as a council on, on some of these fundamental questions.
Okay, one more time, okay. 6.7, Possible Involvement in the Rural Nova Scotia Healthcare Crisis Working Group. Uh, I sent the information or the comments that they had made and so on, and Liz sent them out to you folks. And, uh, if you read down through it, they're, they're looking at trying to have some type of a, a, a working group, task force or whatever, to work on the, on the, basically the health in, uh, in rural Nova Scotia. And the next meeting is scheduled for, uh, next Monday, the 16th, at 10 o'clock in the morning. And it's a, going to be basically a two hour meeting and so on, to have some more discussion and to set a couple of, like, the day of action and so on is what they're trying to come up with and some other thought. And they just wanted to know if the municipal units, like ourselves, Argyle, the town, Digby, Clare and so on, were, were going to be interested in, in doing something along this nature. The, there's no, uh, direct financial cost to a municipal unit other than, I'll say, the traveling and so on at this time, for whoever wishes to sit on that, if, if this is the wishes of this council and so on. What, what is, some comments, your concerns, just keep, I, I don't mind going, but if somebody else wishes to, that would be fine. Do you wish to carry on, like, see where this does go and what does partake of it, or what is your thoughts? Don't all speak at once. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
I, I think that we should pursue this to see where it goes. Mr. Warden, I don't know if we need a motion in that regard, but, but I'm willing to, uh, under the consensus of the other councillors, may, willing to move this forward to the regular council meeting the end of April to, uh, make a decision whether we're going to proceed or even, uh, give permission to whoever wants to sit on that committee.
On the 16th, yeah, that's, it's at 10 o'clock in the, in the morning, it's in Shelburne, at the Fire Hall and so on. And, uh, so I mean, I, I don't know, Greg, I know we had, uh, here last, uh, it was last Wednesday, we had the meeting of, uh, three municipal units, just of the, the mayor, deputy wardens and so on, pertaining to just our, our local, I always call it the doctor search. And we had, uh, Kate, Dr. Casella was in and gave us a big overview of how the, the health authority goes about operating the, the health system as it works and so on. And she gave us an overview of, of the doctors that are leaving and so on, that are changing positions and so on, and how they go about it, the Dalhousie, uh, the seats in there and so on. Uh, both John and, and Greg attended. I, I went into the meeting not knowing a whole lot, and when I left, I didn't know a whole lot more other than their, the health authority is doing what they're, they do. But I, I, I don't, I don't know what you two got out of it, I mean, other than, so, go ahead. John, do you have any comments, and then I'll ask Greg if, but?
I, I walked into that, that meeting totally cold, I didn't know what to expect. Like you said, there was some discussion on, on how they worked the doctor search and where doctors are moving to. I didn't really get a whole lot from it, and I didn't know if that was the place to ask about, uh, the possibility of getting more doctors here and, and what the current new family doctor is taking up for, for say, patient load. Because back in the day, when I was in my teens and early twenties, doctors had patients of 3, 4, 5,000. Nowadays, new doctors coming in only take 1,200. I wanted to even know possibly, and I didn't know if that was the, the right forum, to ask any questions about stuff like that. Recruitment, retentions, but it, but it wasn't a general overview. I, I really walked in, like you said, with no real preconceptions, and I walked out with more questions than I had answers to. But I didn't know if that was the forum to ask those questions, to tell you the truth. Because she seemed very limited on, on her time, you know?
Yeah, she was, well, we had the other meeting, your regional joint council. Greg?
Well, just that it was, that, that meeting was, was born and from the, from the, the previous joint council meeting where it was, there was a consensus that it would be worthwhile to explore whether or not there was any point in resurrecting the original Health and Human Resources Committee, which, which mandate was to recruit physicians. So that's kind of how the discussion started, and then there was agreement to have this meeting with Selena, to come down and talk to her about doctor, physician recruitment in the area. So she came down and she gave us, she gave us the dog and pony show to some extent about, you know, NSHA's strategy and, and how it's being developed and rolled out. Uh, and she provided us with some statistics about vacancies in the area and the, and the need for family physicians as well as specialists. So there wasn't a lot of clear direction, I don't think, about us. I think, well, I think there was a couple of clear messages. First, first of all, I think that I, I got from it that was that the NHA has changed its position on allowing physicians to come down to the area. Um, there was, I think, a cap on those or a moratorium at some point, um, end doctor placement down here, because their statistics were telling them that there was enough doctors here, family doctors here for the physician-patient ratio. And that's one of the reasons that our committee was stifled in the first place. So that's reopened again. Um, you know, she, she had some interesting information. It gave us, like I said, a high level look at the health situation and, and statistics in the, for our region about physician vacancies, pending vacancies. Um, she made an interesting, or we had an interesting comment or discussion, a little bit around the medical clinics, which was my, my big interest, because that's a significant responsibility for us. This has always been beyond our mandate. Um, and she, she alluded to the, to the point that it may not be necessary to have that physical site here anymore to attract physicians. In other words, if they're going to come to the area, they're going to come to the area and find space. Bricks and mortar is not their game for recruiting physicians, and I'm not sure if it should be ours either. But I think at the end of the day, we'll probably resurrect the recruitment committee and continue to try to work with her and some others in the community, the health community, to try to find what the best strategies are to recruit physicians. And it may or may not be in a landlord, I don't know, in the future.
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have an overall plan, I think it was like, wasn't it a 10-year plan? They've been working on it, designing it, and now over the next three to five years, they hope to implement it. And that is to redesign the doctor to patient ratio, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
They, they do have, they have, they have, what is it, four or five zones, and they have a recruiter in each zone. Um, the recruiter for our zone, um, is based in Kentful, I believe.
Yes.
Which is a little bit, you know, disconcerting to me. I mean, I don't know, she says they were down, she was down and visited both of our clinics. I was not aware of that. Um, so there's, there's a little, there's still probably still dumb, some disconnect between the recruiter for our region and what actually, what we think our needs are here and working with us and that, so that we're both working on the same path together. So I think there's some opportunities there to, to, to get better synergies there between what we want to do with what their strategy is and what that recruitment person is trying to do for us.
Yeah. That, that's what that is. Okay, so as it stands right now, I'll, I'll try to attend on the, on the 16th. I know next Monday, we're busy because we have a regional meeting and so on. Our bylaws have been postponed, is it not? Yeah, and, and so until the 23rd, I think, and so on. So I'll try and make, uh, that on, on the 16th. And we have an industrial commission meeting, do we not, on the 16th? Yeah, yeah, 16th, at, at Mariner Centre at 1. See, so I, I, like you say, I'm quite sure Phil will probably be down to Shelburne also, so, anyway. Go ahead, Councillor Cushing, then.
Yep, before the German, uh, uh, German, uh, nothing to do with the rural Nova Scotia thing. I just wanted to let, uh, everybody know about, uh, the upcoming fundraiser of the Friends of the Light. Their, the third annual fundraising concert will take place on April 14th, 2018, at Beacon United Church in the Sanctuary. Um, Shirley Hubbard has been instrumental in helping to organize the concert and the ones in the past. She has lined up all the performers, advertising tickets and programs. This is the third year that she has worked with Friends of the Light. We are very grateful to her for all that she has done for the Yarmouth, Yarmouth Light. Outline of the events, 6 to 7, there's a quiet piano music in what used to be the chapel. The Friends of the Light will have a membership table, sign and auction table, gift shop items, bake table and keeper's kitchen. We'll be there with some taste testing of some of their fine foods, items of the new season. Between 7:00 and 8:30, the concert with many of the Yarmouth local talents. There will be an intermission during the concert for the public to have another opportunity to bid on sign and auction items and check out the other tables. At the end of the concert, the winners of the sign and auction will be announced and they can pick up their items before they leave. Just to add that, I attended to the, the one last year, and it was very well attended, and there was, uh, a lot of good local talent there that played music and it was, uh, you know, uh, so it was, it was a good, they had a pretty good turnout, I would say. But I will, just, uh, one of the musicians from last year has passed away, so he won't, you know, so he'll be greatly missed because he was a very good guitar player, so. Anyway, so just to let you know, on April the 18th, uh, please come help support the Friends of the Light fundraiser.
That was, you said it's 7? 7, a quick, you said?
I think so, yeah. 6 to 7 is the, the chance where you have to go listen to the, look at the stuff they have for, uh, for auction.
Yeah.
He won't stop, yeah.
Then before the German, okay, we're all well aware of the, the filming and so on over. Excuse me, I have not been in touch with, uh, Mr. Clark, Sean Clark and so on. But there, I'm going to try and maybe try to schedule a time some, I'll say, some evening or something that he can come here and meet me, and I'll let you guys know, and if we come and have, if you have questions or concerns and so on. And because I'd like, if at all possible, for us as a council to get, I'll say, go down there as a group and get a picture taken, maybe, you know? I'd like to try and work something like that out, and I know there is some concern, councillors, that maybe you'd like to have your family members get a picture with that good-looking William Defoe guy. I don't know about the other guy, yeah. No, is that right? No, okay, see, I, I didn't know and so on. The other thing that I've had, a lot of organizations ask me if there was any way to get some memorabilia or something that is signed, that they could either auction off later on this fall, et cetera, and so on. So those are just some of the things, but I didn't know if you guys had any questions or concerns you might want to ask. If, if I can arrange something like that, that was all, so I'll go forward there. Deputy Warden, you have a question and?
No, I just have one comment. It should be noted that I will not be available from April the 20th until May the 6th for all your information. I am going to be here and attending a, a regional EMO meeting in Argyle on the 20th. But after that, I'll be, uh, traveling.
Yeah, I won't be at that, you won't be at that.
Just for everyone's information.
Then I guess I'm looking for, oh, I'm sorry, Lauren, you're still on.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Okay, nothing further, the German, thank you.